I agree, notice that this meeting has been provided by the annual also regularly scheduled meetings of municipal council for the year 2025, which was published as a legal advertisement in the Herald News and the record on January 5th, 2025. Further notice of the meeting was given on Friday prior to the meeting by posting said notice on the bulletin board at City Hall and on the City of Clifton website, which notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken on the matters to come before the municipal council.
Roll call please.
Councilman Demato.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Colloge.
Present.
Councilman Latona.
Here.
Councilwoman Pino, absent. Councilwoman Sadie Kula.
Here.
Mayor Grabowski.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's jump right into it. Action item one, authorization to approve the cancellation or refund of a portion of the 2025 first quarter taxes. Move it.
Mayors, could we hold this till Gary gets an explanation? Because if you read it, it says it revert back to September 2nd, 2025, yet they're giving credit for first quarter taxes.
The honor of holding.
It starts as a September 2nd, 2025, yet they're getting credit from first quarter taxes.
Right, and the two prior years. We put in an ordinance in place. And I've been saying that one of the ordinances we should look at changing is 100% disabled veteran. Because as Councilman Latona had pointed out, when this first started, the VA took like forever. And so someone would put in an application with us, and it wasn't their fault that it took the federal government three years to get it together. We've never rescinded that ordinance from that, and so it goes back to whenever they're applying. But typically, most towns will only do for the present year, like you said, Mary.
Well, but they just applied this year. They just applied. They didn't apply in April, so.
But it go, we tied it, we tied it to their veterans.
I understand that, but that's a separate issue. This, they did, they applied September 4th, 2025. That's the date of their application, so not first quarter. I know what you're saying, yeah, but this, this isn't the case anymore. What you're saying is not the case. Because the application wasn't last year, it was this year.
But the application date is tied to when they applied with the federal government, not with us. That's been the problem.
Correct, but it's.
That's why we've been giving out too much.
But again, I don't see that date that they even applied. I see a letter from the Department of Veterans Affairs dated September 2nd.
And the effective date, Mayor, is the Department of Veteran Affairs declared this particular applicant disabled. The effective date is still March 12th.
Yes, March 12th, that's why.
Wait, March of what day?
March 12th of 2025.
Oh, okay, so that's why.
That's why we're covering more than just September. It's going.
But would it cover the full first quarter? Because isn't the first quarter the end of March?
Uh, no, but we need to see.
Portion. Yeah, but it says, well, I think the portion is based on because it's, it says exempt portion.
Yeah, it would be like a quarter of the quarter.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, then it's fine. Okay, it's fine.
All right, so we have motion. And second, roll call please.
I think there's no objections.
Okay, objections.
Do we have a second?
We didn't have a second.
A second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Action item two, authorization to approve the cancellation or refund.
Move it.
Second.
Objections, A3, authorization to approve the cancellation or refund of a portion of.
Move it.
Second.
Objections, A4, 2025 HUD CD sanitary sewer line.
Move it. Second.
Objections, A5, Clifton Police firing range targeting system replacement.
Move it.
Second.
Objections, A6, authorization to approve the notice of intent to award contract.
This, this is number six, correct?
Yes.
I'll move it.
Second.
This is the system that you guys want, right?
Yes.
Because you do not like the old system that it's antiquated and it doesn't do what you want.
All for it, all for it.
So whoever watching home, I went through, it increases transparency, accountability, central and simple communications, eliminates redundancy of links and clutter on the website, simplifies residents' experience. It now will create an online PDF, so residents can fill their documents online instead of coming to City Hall, going to DPW, making three trips, which obviously then reduces administrative time, and online OPRA's. So this is gonna be a massive, huge, huge step forward for everyone.
And we can get out of the old agreement?
Yeah, we're all working on that particular.
Well, working on it, what does that mean? Does it mean?
Means working on it means that.
Is there a penalty that we have to get out of the old agreement?
The legal is looking at the contract in totality to decide.
So we're not gonna sign this until we get.
This was just meant to.
We're signing this, and we're still going to either, either do a breach of contract with the company, or we're going to, what do you look at?
It doesn't.
From, from now on, could we make sure in all the contracts, there's an out clause in it? I said that years ago, but we have new, new councils, so thank you.
Okay, no objections. Actually, Novus is getting ready to go out of business too.
Yeah, Novus is out, and then Novus, Novus came, Councilman, Novus came to Peak, and then Peak is now.
But didn't.
Yeah, and so now, Peak is a new Novus, and the girls are having very difficult time even getting them on the.
Yeah, everyone pretty much uses this one. Okay. A7, authorization to purchase playground safety surface in first quarter.
Second.
I have a question.
Go ahead. We just got some follow-ups. Go ahead.
All right, this was the part that, in fact, we don't even have engineering plans on, even though we were lied to. And I'm going to use the word lied to at the Open Space Committee, that we had engineering site plans. And in fact, Gary, you had asked for them to be emailed to you when I asked, the next day. Finally, months later, what was emailed was not engineered plans, but was a picture from a, from a magazine.
Yeah.
So how are we ordering playground, rubberized playground, if we don't even have plans for this?
So from the pictures that we got, then we got concept plans. And then those concept plans are firm concept plans that we did ship it to CME. And CME advised that this was an acceptable method of constructing this type of park. So this type of park, he said, to save some, some of the construction costs and some of the engineering costs, is that there is no need for the sophistication of a full engineer. That his recommendation would be, it's basically like a direct install. You're swapping swing sets for swing sets and, and surfaces for surfaces. And he says, what you're doing now is funding it, and then if he comes on board, or there's, there's some more complicated site configurations, then he would step in, or Larden would step in, and then kind of change those particular thoughts. If you're doing a water park, or you're doing the splash park, then you have infrastructure, then you have piping, then you have electric, then you have landscaping. He says that would be more advantageous for that type of, that type of. Okay, let's move.
Okay, wait, but I do have one other question. So part of this park is all-inclusive and part is not?
Ryan said that, that this is an acceptable way to base your, to base your concept on the, on the concept.
The concept.
And before you shovel.
Right, I know what you're saying, but I just wanna make everyone aware.
That he would then, yes, and he is.
That part of the park is not. So when you have a child with special needs, you have to be able, you'll be able to tell him, well, can't go on that part of the playground. Just note my objection.
Not yet. What you're doing at this point is, is you're building off your concept, and then you'll get some additional feedback or insight as you fund it and kind of move forward.
Okay, no objections.
Note my objection.
Okay. Objection noted. A8, authorization through purchase of playground equipment for Spurling Park.
Move it.
Second. Objections.
I have a question. Why doesn't it say where the money is coming from the Open Space Grant of $250,000 that we got from the county?
You had that memo on the prior agenda. I will resend that memo, where the $750,000 collectively is coming from, or whatever.
Right, well, this says it's coming out of the open trust account, Open Space Trust account, and Spurling Park grant for $29,000.
On your.
You can get back to me, but note my objection. Again, I want all-inclusive parks, not half or inclusive parks.
A9, authorization to approve the term of installation of ground wire.
Second.
Objections, A10, authorization to approve the contract for Triad Associates.
Move it.
Second.
Objections, A11, authorization to award professional service contract.
Move it. I think, Tony, you had spoken to Beagle.
Yeah, I had a few questions.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah, I can go comfortable.
It's good.
There's nobody internal that can do this, right, just?
No, this particular grant, with that sophistication, he's.
Okay, objection, A12, authorization to approve the property and casualty insurance broker services.
Move it.
This is going to Galaxy?
Alars. Alars.
Alars.
Okay, A13, authorization to approve an entertainment license renewal application for La Bonita.
Move it. Second.
Objections, A14, authorization to approve an ordinance that prohibits certain.
Second.
Objections, A15, authorization to approve an order to permit parking restrictions on Arthur Street.
Move it.
Second. Move it.
Objections, A16, authorization to approve a parade application for Central and Polish Children's Dance for Sunday.
Move it.
Second.
Objections, A17, authorization to approve a Turkish food festival. Move it.
They paid, they paid the fee, and it's okay with the police?
Yeah, they're.
Oh, no, it's at their own location. It's fine, yeah, it's at their own location.
Police and everybody's.
Okay, good.
So just one thing on this to the administration. When are we gonna have the updated ordinance? Mayor, through you, the attorneys, I sent you this email again last week about updating our ordinance before next year for our parades, carnivals, festivals, to recover the cost for services. Okay?
And I'll send you some suggestions I have as well. Thank you.
Okay, A18 was the late item, authorization to approve a bill for it.
Move it. Second.
And objections.
Wait, 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 I have a question.
Sorry, question.
Uh, thank you. And because this was a late item, I didn't have a moment to kind of review all this, but can you explain?
Full max verse.
As to, yeah, as to.
There are, there are a lot of you rules, both laws and union rules, about children on a movie set. And they have to attend, they're allowed to work, which is unusual, because children aren't usually allowed to work, but it's an unusual business. They're allowed to work on a set, but they have to take certain breaks at certain times to attend schooling in their trailer. They have a tutor there, and so this is actually a pretty common request that they're asking for, because they wanna shift the hours earlier to accommodate the breaks that they have to take by union obligation to teach the kids.
Oh, so they wanna start filming.
6:30.
Or, and that's the way where they're looking for it.
So they can start the school day.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's all inside the famous footwear.
Okay, no objections.
I was just asking. I wanted to know, and it's pretty cool.
Okay. All right, let's go write the discussion items for new business. It's traffic calming improvement law report. Third Street and Dwasline road for discussion. Um.
Really, it seems that they're both working, aren't they?
I'm not completely happy with Third Street.
Go ahead.
Because as a car comes around the corner, car comes around the other corner, they're, they just had an accident last week. They're making wide turns, and now they're, they're making so wide.
I've heard that too, yeah.
That, that they're actually crashing into each other.
Well, I don't know the answer, because the old way, for like firemen days, we needed people running the lights, or people trying to go around, someone making a turn and hitting pedestrians, so I don't know. Can we?
Want me to ask for alternatives, man?
Can we keep, can we keep them? Just make them thinner? If you're saying it's too wide?
I know, if you got, I mean.
I've seen, I've been there.
Yeah, you see where, if you're, you're coming out, so you're making a wider turn, and a guy's coming down the other way, he's making a wider turn. There's not enough for both.
So can we find out from traffic, and we can make them, keep them, but make them thinner?
Be closer, closer to the curb.
Give a little more space.
Yeah.
But they, they are being used more prevalently. Montclair has one on Lorraine, and I don't. Park is the cross street. Lacazare is.
I just think, like Tony said, they might be a little too.
Maybe those are too far out, maybe, but they gotta learn to drive. Learn to turning is, maybe they don't teach.
And, and on Dwasline, I don't know, I have yet to see another town, after years of fighting to try to get them there, that we put them 100 feet off the main road and another 100 feet away.
Can you allow me to confuse myself since I live on that street?
And then. A mile away.
Okay, thank you.
And then there's nothing for the rest of the strip, so I don't know, I don't know why that happened, but.
Tony, I agree. I think it should be, I think it should be on the whole street.
Like a third and a third?
I think it should be on the whole street. I think there's so many other streets that could benefit from this, like Haddonfield. I mean, and if you go through Montclair, I guess it's North Mountain Avenue, it's.
Yeah.
Upper Mountain Avenue is the, they were even on Upper Mountain Avenue by the park and the swimming club. The, every street has them, and they're built into the road, so they don't have to take them out in the winter. But I agree with you, that because more and more, I know, I don't, actually, I'm getting lots of calls on Valley Road, cars speeding. The other night, this makes no sense, given the length of the street. You can speed from Brook Avenue to this first rumble strip, and the other way you can go that way.
That's true. Well, the point is.
They should have been a third of the way and a third of the way. Now, the council didn't say to put them a third of the way and a third of the way.
Well, you would think.
But why, why would we put two speed tables 100 feet apart off the main road, and then where, with all due respect, the cemetery is and the dead people are, and then skip the whole rest of the road where the residents are? So I think we need to look at moving one of them down, so they're more in line with the purpose.
I think we need to add more than.
Well, and I thought, that's really the point, is because even where it is, it's having a positive effect.
Yes, oh, yes.
That conclusion.
But I don't know if we need two 100 feet apart, but I, I'm okay without anyone.
I think there is a minimum distance that you should put them. I don't know if they're done properly. I don't know that. But I know that, like I said, North Mountain has them periodically. Maybe it's one every block, you know, they're, they're, maybe they're.
Because you don't wanna give the person the opportunity to hit it and then realize he has five blocks to speed before he hits the next one.
Correct. To speed, exactly. And personally, I'd like to see these on other streets. We will never have enough police to, and Haddonfield is a perfect one. We're getting lots of complaints about that.
I just mentioned that.
I, I sent an email to the administration, if you remember, because of the pitch, supposedly in Haddonfield, according to law, we can't put the speed tables, but we could put the rumble strips. So I sent it to the administration again as a follow-up.
Oh, right, I did say the other.
Because we agreed to that. I'm not mistaken.
We did.
We all agreed to do the rumble strips on Haddonfield and maybe some flashy slowdown signs, so if we can try getting that for. Yes, Bill.
My colleagues, if you look at the Uniform Traffic Safety Manual, they'll, yeah, how far they go, put them apart. And this way, we don't have to worry about trying to figuring out. They have, they have that information.
So Gary, could we look into like?
Yep, I'll pass that manual. I'm sure that we'll have that manual, make sure.
And what, adding one more on Dwasline?
Well, I think we add, I think it, I think we need more than two.
At least. Two more on Dwasline? Okay. Okay.
But are they, are these the type that have to be come up in the winter? Does anybody know?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either, but.
I think they're permanently.
No, no, they're portable, but they don't come up.
I don't, I hope not.
I don't think the Plows are gonna be.
Two more, okay.
Well, the reason why I'm saying that, because Passaic used to have one right in front of Tom Hilbert's house. And they, well, first of all, that one didn't go the width of the entire road, so people went around. But they used to take it up in the winter, so that's why I'm asking that, to make sure. But I, I agree with everyone. I think it's had a positive effect. I think we need to look at doing it to more streets, more streets.
And refining the ones that we have.
Correct. And Haddonfield, if you could get back to us on the rumble strips, because you're right, Tony, we did.
And for other streets that could benefit.
Third, Third is another street, like especially on, on this side of, you know, between Highland and Clifton Avenue. Those, there's been so many accidents at the cross streets that.
We'll pick, look into more of that next.
Okay, discussion two is fees for use of parks and city property. I think that's.
I, I had, yes, I had asked for this to put on, and actually, I apologize, it's been a crazy kind of week for everyone, but. And I remember getting this, I was gonna say, maybe earlier this year, Debbie had given us what, like, Tennessee Promotions pays for use. Well, they don't pay. They give a donation to the recreation department for use of, to have their flea markets. They have a great, they go around the state doing it. So it's a for-profit business using public land and not paying fair market value for it. Because Chris, you've seen the DPW cleaning up for it. We provide the portageons and everything else and the wear and tear. We've gotta look at, if, if they're gonna use our facilities and our park, we've gotta be able to charge fair market value, including, you know, cost of repairs or anything else. We have to make money on it. We can't just, this is a for-profit business.
Mayor, through you, the Mr., I don't know, would that be fixed with that ordinance that we're fixing for the parades and all that? Is that the same ordinance to fix that fee structure to pay for costs, or is that different one? It's a different one? Yeah, okay.
And with that, in, I mean.
But, but I'm sorry, Councilman, I think that's an excellent idea, but I, I don't understand, though, how that's possible, because even as, even nonprofits, when they wanna use the, the public land, have to pay a fee. And there's a, a fee, so how could they just say, well, we're just gonna give a donation? So I'm, I'm wondering if it's, it's something's not, we have a policy, but something happened along the way. Maybe our city manager, can he give us more on that too?
We got a memo from Debbie a while back, so maybe Kathleen could look for it. It was on the agenda. I don't remember exactly when.
Okay, so just to push forward, how do we fix it? How do we come up with the market rate? I don't, in my wheelhouse, who do we go to for that?
Well, I guess question one is, is there a fee that isn't being paid, the idea being the donation is in lieu of the fee payment? Or, you know, what's the story there?
Yeah.
And then, and then step two is, what should the fee be?
Right.
Do I, I mean, for flea markets, I don't believe we have any fee for it in our ordinance right now, addressing the issue at all.
I don't think we do.
I, I'd be interested in changing that.
Me too.
That's why I thought it was the same ordinance, I would think.
No, I think it's a different one.
But it's a park fee, though. To use the park there, you do rent it.
Well, they don't. They made a donation. I'm almost 99% sure.
Okay.
So I, I think give us more clarity, I guess, on that.
All right, yeah, we'll look into.
And with that also, and I believe, Gary, you mentioned this to me, the Showmobile that we have, Gary?
Yes, 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 I'm listening.
That you had told me that it's costing us a lot of money when we rent it, give it to other.
Yeah, because we're using the, our manpower is being utilized to, for this, for setting up.
Right, so we have to fix that as well.
Correct, yeah.
We can't be, we can't be just giving away stuff.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll, you have that, Tom? The Showmobile too? Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, um, D3, Exploratory Revenue Committee.
I'm gonna keep this real short and sweet, and I wanna give credit where it's due. Rosemary was the first one to bring this up publicly when we were talking about budget issues last year, or earlier this year, feels like a year. And I think going forward, it's clear that we need to bring in more money. We can't keep leaning on the taxpayers. And I think at the very least, having a group of people with an, with a vested interest in the good of the city, brainstorming and making recommendations to council, we're gonna bicker and we're gonna have problems. We're a dysfunctional governing body. But at the very least with this, what we could never say is that we weren't told or given options. So that's my pitch.
So is your pitch to have citizens on this committee as well?
Well, that can be part of the discussion. I, I think, I think it couldn't hurt to have residents on. There's lots of people in different fields and areas of expertise that might bring some information to the table. I mean, we have to, in a situation like this, we have to be very careful about potential conflicts.
Well, it also has to be a non-binding.
Right.
Because we can't have, you know, the citizens, we're not, we're the governing body for the policymaker.
Oh, yeah, no, and need advisory.
But I, I think that, I think we should have citizens on it, but again, to bring ideas.
Yeah, for input.
Yeah, for input.
So feedback.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's a good idea.
I think my recommendation is do it sooner than later.
Yes.
Because your, your short-term revenues.
Well, I like to be on the committee.
Are gonna be needed come January 1st, just looking at preliminary budget numbers, so.
I'd like to be on the committee too.
Long-term budget numbers might be.
The three, there you go. That's all right, Mary, Chris, and, and Rosemary.
Thank you.
Okay, so work that out between yous whenever you wanna. Okay, um, discussion regarding Clifton Board of Education sewer fees.
Yeah, so this was a late item. You know, it's my management style not to kind of negotiate in public relative to relationships that Tom has with, with the, the legal side and myself with the board. But the bottom line, and I included the email trail, and I included the, the thoughts and the processes is, is that the school board still has that $735,000 anomaly in their water system. I checked with Palm Beach, not Palm Beach, I apologize, like Palm Beach on the head.
Passaic Valley.
Passaic Valley.
I can afford it.
Yes, yes, I do. So Passaic Valley responded this afternoon. I just wanna read the, the email real quick to our request.
Well, they're still working on it, right?
They are still working on it, yeah. So the consumption figures on those bills are being corrected. We will send out copies as soon as the work is completed. We should have something more for you this week.
Well, then I, then I think we have to hold this to see what it is. We're not gonna negotiate now when we don't know what the side is and what it is. Let's hold it off. Quite frankly, I think it was pretty poor that a one-sided article was done. It was quite clear that was done for a purpose. So until we have what the actual figures are, let's hold off, let's hold off.
It's the same as buying a house with a lien, or, you know, you can't negotiate a contract without true numbers.
Right.
I just want one more thing, Councilman. I just wanna let everybody know that, that the board has not sent a bill, an invoice, a demand for money, anything to the school board whatsoever, relative to, the city has not, relative to this issue.
The city hasn't. So that was a falsehood.
And it was the, it was the, I don't wanna put him on the spot, but the Council and Joe's ability to kind of see the difference between a self-liquidating fund and taxes and invoices that kind of made this a little bit more complicated to make sure that the, that the, the agreement is, is correct. We've had this conversation in, in a municipal alliance meeting, even before all those articles were written. So they were well aware of this particular problem, so.
They, there was never a question, since I'm a member of that committee, there was never a question, in fact, that the bills were wrong.
Correct.
When we, and they were told, they have to get it corrected. That's up to them to get it corrected.
Correct.
And they, they haven't done it. They didn't push for it. If you look at the correspondence, they thought the city was. Well, no, that was quite clear. And you know what? This is why, and I know you have the committee of the committees, we've gotta have minutes, tape recording of these. Because it's not he said, she said. Right here, you can point to the tape recorder and play it, because that's what we said. And, and this just went so out of hand. But I think it was done on purpose, that it purposely was done that way. But again, we have to have numbers to negotiate.
Not to take any more time, what is the issue with Passaic Valley Water that this has been going on for a year? What can't they figure out? What's the problem?
We can all agree that Passaic Water Valley has a problem. That's the issue. The issue is Passaic Valley addressing the, addressing the need.
I think it has to do with the construction that they were doing at Woodrow Wilson. If you remember, one of the meetings, we were in Gary's office, I think, I was in there, I think you and Joe were on the phone.
Something, something as important as this, with numbers this big, that can't be figured out in a timely manner, causing all this chaos?
That's the commonality between the two agencies that were having difficulties with parks. I'm sorry, Councilman.
I just wanna make sure that I understood you correctly, Gary. We did not send them out a sewer bill?
Correct.
So our system has created a sewer bill for them?
There is an invoice with the anomaly on it that we, that we presented to them with their account number to go to Palm, to go to Passaic Valley to rectify that.
Well, right now, I'm, I'm just focused on the sewer bill. Did we send them a sewer bill, or did we not send them a sewer bill?
We did not.
So then why did they not get a sewer bill, but the rest of us all got a sewer bill?
I do not know. I, I don't.
I think because of they, this city recognized there was a problem, wasn't that it? And that, that's why it was caught.
I transmitted them that particular, those particular readings for all the.
So churches haven't been, haven't received a sewer bill?
I do not know.
Because the whole purpose of that ordinance was, was to cover all the exempt properties. We're now gonna pay their fair share into the sewer. And so now, if you're telling me that we have an ordinance that says this is what we're gonna do, and then we didn't actually invoice anyone, well, you can pretty much kiss self-liquidating goodbye, because it's probably represents 5% or 10% of your billing. You're gonna have a collection rate that's gonna wind up being 90%, and we balanced the budget based on 95%. So, so we're gonna now not have a self-liquidating sewer utility, because we didn't send out sewer bills by ordinance, which was created two years ago.
The conversation's not lost, if that's, if that, I would have to find out. I'm not sure.
My understanding was, the only one we held back was the school board while we worked it out.
That's what I go to. Can you confirm?
Because I was going to counsel, but we never said, it passed and the school board one was tabled, that portion that I thought we agreed to while we worked out the MOU. So everyone else should have gotten one, and if they didn't, that's a problem.
That is a problem. It's a problem because the.
Huge problem.
Because the rate study was also based on these, these non-exempt tax, you know, churches and stuff coming in and that. So now, well, if they're not, everyone wasn't billed and not paying it.
I hope not.
Again, the conversation might be premature if you allow me.
Well, yeah, alright, well, can, can you find out, yeah, please?
Again, the conversation might be premature if you allow me to kinda get that information, then I'll, I'll make sure.
Because here's, here's my recollection of the issue. They, they had received a sewer bill last year, and they were pretty angry about the fact that the municipal alliance committee wasn't meeting on a regular basis, and they got blindsided by a sewer bill after they had adopted their budget. And they had basically said, you know, listen, had we known, now we're gonna have to try and figure out a way to move money around. But they were also adamant about they don't wanna pay the bill. I, I'm fairly certain from the board members that I've spoken to, that they did receive a sewer bill, and that's what started this whole thing. And they started to do their research on water consumption in order to say the sewer bill is way too high, and that we're where we are with, with what we have in front of us at this point, based on the fact that they did receive a bill.
I asked.
Did that ever get sent to you? Did we have a copy of that?
I, I asked three or four times for whatever was sent to them, and I did not receive any kind of documentation back.
So let's check with our, let's check with our tax collector.
But I did ask.
Because our tax collector is the one who would be responsible for sending out the bill.
Well, can someone text someone from the Board of Ed and say, send it to us if it exists?
He did, he said he did, and they never responded. But don't we have an outside company sending out the sewer bills?
I do not now, you're right.
I think so.
Get deeper than my puddle depth on this matter.
Because, well, right, because when you.
Well, they may send it out, but we would create the file.
Well, I think it's created, yeah, I understand, but I think my recollection is what like Gary said, but let's find out.
Would you have to look into that?
I will, and at this point, Mr. Egan has a good conversation with their legal.
Okay.
We're on the same page. Passaic Valley is, is, is looking to remedy that, that invoice. And if there's any further documents, then I will present it to them.
Okay, perfect.
So I, I, but the point I wanna make, and I didn't realize that potentially we didn't bill ten percent of the people like we were supposed to.
That's not true.
But my point being that whether the, whether the billing is incorrect or not, the bill went out, and that part of that bill was to determine the amount of revenue coming in. So I'm all for, and we should be making sure people pay their fair share, so it needs to be fixed. But I don't necessarily think that fixing it this year will help us with our goal to being self-liquidating.
Well, let's find out, let's find out.
And so I think we just need to be careful.
Well, if they got a bill, that means they are getting them then, now that I think about it.
But we're here and they didn't get a bill.
I know, but you're saying you heard they got a bill, so if they did, that means all the nonprofits come.
Alright.
Alright, let's find out.
This is all hearsay.
This is what happens when you don't put everyone in the same room. Okay, I like everyone in the same room.
No, or when you have people that have volunteer motive.
Any, any council mail?
Council mail number one, I think we should address.
Yes, yes, a hundred percent.
Because this is about the animal cruelty, and it says, "All enforcement powers of animal cruelty and neglect places, cases were removed from the animal controls auspices in two thousand and nineteen." "The state established that all municipalities had to have a humane law enforcement officer who investigate all animal cruelty and or neglect cases within the municipality." "If the," and they have it hello, "feels that there was animal cruelty or neglect of an animal, they must bring the information to the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office for enforcement purposes." So, it's not that we're not, and actually, we do have that person in the police department, correct? I believe, Tom?
Two, two detectives.
Yes, two detectives.
It's, yeah, I believe it's in the detective bureau.
Really? It's not the animal control, it's detective?
And, so, if, no, that's why if you look, it says a law enforcement officer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Law enforcement officer. So, I know at the last meeting, people got up and said, can't we have the county prosecutor come here? They're never gonna come here, and they're never gonna talk about a case that they chose not to prosecute. So, again, we are doing everything, I believe, that if somebody sees something, like anything else, they have to report it. And they have to report it in City Hall. Maybe we can get the names of the detectives that are the humane law enforcement officers, because that's the key.
And I would also, I think we should, if we haven't sent the letter, I think we should to the prosecutor, just saying, hey, listen, we're, what's going on? We're not prosecuting animal abusers in Clifton?
That's, that's a good idea, that's a good idea.
That's probably a good idea.
And I would also ask residents out there, if you care about this, and, and you wanna speak up for these animals who can't speak for themselves.
Write to the prosecutor.
Write, write to the county prosecutor.
Call.
Call, write, show up, whatever you gotta do, but this needs to be addressed.
So there, through you, to legal, this is a state statute that only allows them to prosecute? Because I don't see a statute here.
It don't, and it doesn't state that it's a statute, it might be a policy. He just stated that the state established that. In two thousand and nineteen, the state established that all municipalities had to have a humane law enforcement officer, so.
Right, but if you read that, if there isn't a state statute, then they can grant us the authority then to, to do it.
I'm assuming it's either a statute or administrative code provision. That's usually how the state implements.
Yeah, I would think it had to be, yeah.
Whenever they come out.
Because according to this, nothing here says they can't give us the authority to prosecute locally. Unless it's a state statute that says only the prosecutor's office could prosecute.
I think that's what he's saying it is.
I believe that is the case. I spoke with a health officer also, and he said that, I didn't look to see, check the statute, but he said that it has to be prosecuted by the county for a reason, I don't know which one.
Yeah, and I, I would just like to add, on the city end, any animal abuse, report of animal abuse is thoroughly investigated by the animal control in conjunction with the detectives and the police department. So, we, we do thoroughly investigate any allegations or reports of animal abuse, and then that information that we compile is then turned over to the prosecutor. Which then does nothing, so that's the problem.
Okay.
Okay, alright, and your other council mail?
Well, there's just, the answer about the bedbugs, that, that I think it's self-explanatory. And the retail, who would explain, that's where I wanna go for.
The lighting, seeing now.
This actually proves what I said. There's parks that, Athena Steel Park, they don't, nobody, we pay for the lighting. So, if we're gonna have one park that the city pays for, I don't think it's fair that, that all these parks pay for it, pay for it. I know part of the issue is, and it's been happening a lot, I mean, years and years it's at Surgeon Park, that the lights were turned off because they owe so much money to Passaic, to P S E N G. So, again, I know we have an issue. In the past, I was a very big proponent of changing it. I don't know if it ever was, you know, you're told one thing and then other things happen. I don't think leagues should have to pay for new roofs on the clubhouse, or improvements in the bathrooms or anything. These are city-owned buildings.
So.
The leagues should use the money to help the kids and, and keep them in sports, rather than in drugs and, and do this, not paying for improvements to our buildings. So, I guess number one, I want confirmation that any improvements needed, repairs to the clubhouses in any of our parks is paid for by the city, not put on the backs of the leagues. And I know that was the case in the park up by, off of Valley Road, I can't think of the name of the park, where they have the,
Albion.
Albion Park, Albion Park.
Albion.
Yeah, Albion, because I, they paid a fortune to, to do a bathroom, to do a roof. We've gotta change it, it's just not right. So if that requires a motion, I will.
Well, and before you do that, so, and, and I've asked this question, I didn't get full answers. The library, I always see bills on our bills pay. The, the library is self-funding, correct? We pay a separate tax, it's about five million dollars. So I need to know, and I didn't get all the, I got half answers from the CFO, he's not here tonight. Why, if the library has a separate tax, they get their five million in, why are their bills on our bills pay? Should they not be self-sustaining, running themselves? So, the HVAC system and everything, just gotta fix the library. Did that come out of the library funding, or did that come out of the city?
Hard to add both.
Well.
Yeah, from what I understand, this is that the, the money collected from the library then pays those bills.
So the library is fully, the library is fully self-funding. So when things are done at the library, it comes out of their five million dollar annual pot.
Their budget.
No, I.
Well, I, I, the reason why I question is, because when I see our bills pay, I see us paying for things.
Yeah, it's coming out of our checking account with their money, or the money that you're collecting for the budget.
Years ago, on the library budget, and Tom, you might remember this, you're, probably Joe, you might remember, because it was our first term. The city charged the library an astronomical, it was like a line item that was, you couldn't even tell what it was. If I remember, it was eight hundred thousand dollars for use of facilities. The CFO, no one could figure out what this was. So the then-council voted not to charge that. I think at the time, we might have went down to two hundred or, if I, again, the numbers are, are vague because it was so many years ago. But I think the answer to that is, Tony, before we answer, I believe that they pay for some, and we pay for some as well.
Well, you, you, so I'm getting to your point.
So, on the library, their library budget, we should look at. Again, I haven't looked at it this year to see what it is.
It's about five million, so.
I understand that.
Where my point was going is, have everyone else how I feel, the library has a five million, before the hate mail comes, council don't support the library, the library has a five million dollar fund, so it should be, and if it's not self-liquidating, I will be making a motion that starting next year, it's self-liquidating, my point is, our field houses are falling apart. We're telling our parents of our kids, you gotta pay for your own lights, the field houses are falling apart, you gotta pay to fix the field houses. But the library, which has a five million dollar budget, if we are using our money and our bonding to pay the fix and run the library, that's my point. When it comes to our residents and our parks and our kids, we're telling them, you're on your own. We need to find that answer out, because we're paying for the library for sure, we need to be paying for the parks. But if it isn't self-funding, I think next year it needs to start to be. That is a large pot of money those funds and funding needs to be coming from there, so.
Well, the library has its own board too, the library board, yeah, which, I, it's good points, Tony, which we need to have the answers. You pulled up the library budget?
No, I did not, but what we're discussing, and I'd like to get back to the lights in the park in a minute, but what we're discussing on how the library funds itself is, is, is not an accurate description. The library budget falls under the municipal budget. However, up to what is the mandatory third of a mil that we raise, that is considered outside of cap. So they've got actually two sections in the budget that they, that they exist in. One is through the, through the outside cap portion, because we've already been tagged for we gotta raise this amount of taxes. Most towns have additional money that is within the cap as well. So most towns, we may be told that we need to raise five million for them. It's not uncommon to have a library budget that's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the taxpayers are paying the full five point five million. But five million of that is sitting outside the cap, so it's not, it's not subject to that two percent cap on the tax levy. So they're not a utility, they're not in, in the business of being self-liquidating. They do have some autonomy, and there's typically a fund in the budget for them to get quarterly transfers based on that five million dollars. So that if we have budgeted four point five million dollars for them, and the tax that we're supposed to raise is five million dollars, they'll get a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars every quarter, and that five hundred dollars moves to them. All their capital projects, because the libraries are owned by the taxpayers of Clifton. So they're no different than a firehouse, they're no different than this building, and so we are paying all the capital expenses. We're supposed to be paying all the capital expenses. And that is now my issue, that you just confirmed that, and that is true. That again, our field houses in our parks are falling apart, and we've been telling the parents of all these kids, you're on your own all these years, those are city buildings still. I haven't been telling the kids and the parents in all the parks all these years that even though they're city-owned, the lights, Albion has fallen apart and looks horrendous, and some of the other ones, that we haven't been fixing or funding them, but we're doing some of the others, so. You know my one set of rules, so if that is the case, then we need to spend money to fix our parks. Well, we've already addressed that. So we've already addressed that. Back in July, I made a motion, you made a second to the motion, that we were gonna now supply the lights, and we were gonna now supply the maintenance on the buildings of all the parks.
We did that a long time ago.
We did it, back in July.
But we did that even before then, it never happened.
And, and, well, back in, back in July, it passed six to one, so I'm assuming the budget that administration placed before us is taking into account that we now have additional utility bills to pay, and have also now taken an inventory of the buildings in terms of what they need to be fixed, because, Tony, it's one of my big pet peeves, you know, I, I go to these fields, my kids play on travel teams, and we got portageons, you know, sitting at the fields with the clubhouse that's locked. And then there was one time that the portageons were locked. And, and that's just not a good look.
And I hear that from parents, they go to other towns, and they got field houses at their parks.
Right, but this obviously shows that that wasn't done, because it's still the responsibility of the leagues. So while we said we did this, and that's what I'm saying, it was last term, because I remember sitting down with Dan Beck and the board of Albion Park, and going through the numbers, and we voted then that the league should not have to pay for the improvements or repairs to the field house. And it never was done. It continued to be on the backs of the leagues, so.
Well, that ends now, then.
How, why are we, when are, when are we gonna solve this? We keep.
Well, well, we solved it.
Last term, well, obviously not, because here's, what is this dated, and it still says it's in the leagues.
So then it's an implementation issue.
Yeah, it's an implementation issue.
Yes.
What's happening, so.
Governing body to administration, implement, let's move on.
The, the lights have to be, and, and I'd like, and I'd like, and I'd like a list of all, and if the league people are listening to this meeting, I would like to, a list of the clubhouses, what needs to be improved there, because I know there's tons. Look at Lowry Field, they just knocked the clubhouse down, so there's nothing there. It's just swamp, but anyway, it's a whole other discussion.
You should get implemented, that's it.
We're working with P S E N G on the, actually on Mrs. Valentine's field, which is Surgeon.
Surgeon, yeah.
So that's at the top of the list. We identified that one, and Debbie is working on a full list of, of the fields, and then we'll transfer those with our P S E N G contact.
And maybe there's LED lighting grants to put in there.
Well, the lights already exist there.
Oh, they're.
Yeah, the lights.
Well, I meant, I don't know if they're halogen, is it okay?
The hardest for them to run the lights was so astronomical, the league in Surgeon Park, I remember years ago, they had like an outstanding balance of like eleven, twelve thousand dollars, they couldn't afford it. Come on, it's like ridiculous.
Okay, alright, we're gonna go to confidential stuff.
Before we do, Mayor, because I just, one other point on, on the lights, because again, the, the council is near unanimous in, in terms of moving forward, this, the city's now gonna be paying for, for this, not, not the youth leagues. But I think from an administrative perspective, we need to take a look at how lights get turned on and off. Because it may not be cost-effective to have only one person able to access the app and turn lights on and off if it winds up now becoming an overtime issue for someone in the recreation department who's gonna wait for a phone call to then, you know, shut off lights, type of thing. So I would suggest that we look at these lights and the software that goes into turning them on and off. And if we can have multiple users, that we put whoever is in charge of the league as the person who remembers to turn the lights on and off, I think that that would probably save us some money in the long run in terms of instead, instead of having it lay on, on City Hall staffing. If you're at the field, you know when you're walking away, push the app and turn the lights out.
Yeah, after everybody leaves.
So Gary will work on that.
I will, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, we're going to confidential now.
Whereas the municipal council deemed it essential in the furtherance of the public interest to discuss in closed session as expressly permitted by NJFA ten colon four dash twelve, the following subjects to be discussed as per the agenda and the resolution. Personnel matters will be discussed, contracts and agreements to be discussed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the public shall be excused, excluded from this portion of the council's meeting to be held on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at which time said subject shall be discussed. And be it further resolved that the discussion held at such closed session can be disclosed to the public on or about the time the matter is concluded. Motion to go into closed session? Motion.
I'd like to quote, notice that this meeting has been provided by the Annual Notice of Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Municipal Council for the year twenty twenty-five, which was published as a legal advertisement in the Herald News and the Record on January fifth, twenty twenty-five. Further notice that this meeting was given on Friday, prior to the meeting by posting said notice on the bulletin board at City Hall and on the City of Clifton website, which notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken on the matters to come before Municipal Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Demato?
President.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Kolojay?
President.
Councilman Latona?
Here.
Councilwoman Pinno?
Here.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Here.
Mayor Gabowski?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Today's invocation will be given by Rabbi Cronenberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise?
Almighty God, Lord of the universe.
Almighty God, Lord of the universe, as we pause now for a moment of prayer prior to the start of the city council meeting, we ask you that you bless the mayor and all the members of the city council, giving them the knowledge and wisdom to make the right decisions to benefit all the citizens of the city. And as the new school year begins, please bless all our children. They learn not only the three Rs, but respect for their teachers and classmates, internalizing that we are all created in your image and are deserving to be treated as we ourselves wish to be treated. Amen.
Amen. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Rabbi. We have a few public hearings to start with, the twenty twenty-five budget amendment. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard on the amended budget, I move the hearing be closed.
So, second. So moved. Next, we have a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five amended municipal budget. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard?
Actually, we had the hearing ready, Mayor, so this is just, you need a motion in a second for adoption of the amended budget.
Move it. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Demato.
Yes.
Councilman Gibson.
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay.
No.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
No.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
No.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Four yes, three no. Resolution passed.
We have a resolution, Budget Section Two, upon adoption for year twenty twenty-five. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard?
So, I think it's a resolution, I'll move it.
I have a second.
Isn't that where we just did, am I missing something?
No.
Second.
Second.
Before discussion, Mayor, if we can have Rob explain what, because there seems to be a little confusion on the day, what we're voting for on this, the two of the budget.
Essentially, those are, you're taking the same action. The first order, the first resolution was to formally adopt the budget. The second one is really also to adopt it just in the state format of the budget, so that's just a specific format that the state requires in the budget, but essentially, it's the same action.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Demato.
Yes.
Councilman Gibson.
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay.
No.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
No.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
No.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Four yes, three no. Resolution passed.
Okay, we have a few presentations tonight. We have a few residents who've worked for the city and reached the milestone of fifty years of service. The first one I'd like to ask, Marge Bissell, will come up front, and she's been a crossing guard for fifty years, and everyone knows Marge. And I'd just like to read this proclamation first, it says, let me put my glasses on. Whereas it is with great pride and deep appreciation that the City of Clifton acknowledges the exceptional dedication and commitment of Marge, Margaret Marge Bissell, who has devoted fifty years of faithful service to safety and well-being of our community as a school traffic guard since September third, nineteen seventy-five, and whereas through her unwavering vigilance, professionalism, and care, Marge has played a crucial role in ensuring the safety of our children, pedestrians, and motorists, making Clifton a safer and more welcoming place for all. And whereas over the course of five decades, Marge has exemplified the highest standards of service, consistently going above and beyond the call of duty, protect and serve the people of Clifton, and whereas Marge has become a beloved and trusted figure within our community, known for her compassion, reliability, and positive attitude, always set in an example of what it means to serve with pride and integrity. And whereas this milestone not only marks an incredible achievement in her career, but it also reflects the profound impact of her service on generations of Clifton residents and the lasting legacy that she has created as a protector of public safety. Now therefore, the governing body of the City of Clifton do hereby express our deepest gratitude to Margaret Marge Bissell, I hope I'm getting it close, it's close enough, right? In recognition of fifty years of outstanding service as a school traffic guard, and we extend our heartfelt congratulations to this monumental achievement. I'd like to have a nice round of applause. And let it also be noted that, that through the years, Marge has always cared more about the crossing guards than herself, making sure that they always had their uniforms. When uniforms were scarce, she made sure that she had found ways to get them the uniforms and protection and rain gear, when a lot of times I know it was tough to get, and you always managed to, you know, service the women, and I know they appreciate it, and so do we, so thank you. God bless you, Marge. Thanks, Mayor. We have one more presentation, Councilman Kolojay.
So we also have another fifty years of dedicated service to the City of Clifton from Bob Sillick. I'm not sure if he's here, I don't see him here, but we're gonna read this into the record anyway, because a half a century of dedicated service is something worth celebrating. So there's a proclamation honoring Robert "Bob" Sillick on fifty years of dedicated service to the City of Clifton. Whereas it is with great pride and deep appreciation that the City of Clifton acknowledges the exceptional dedication and commitment of Robert "Bob" Sillick, who has devoted fifty years of faithful service to our community since his start date of August fifth, nineteen seventy-five, and whereas Bob has dedicated fifty years of his professional life to serving the citizens of Clifton, demonstrating unwavering commitment and exemplary public service, and whereas throughout five decades, Bob's contributions have been vital to the growth and successful operation of our community, directly impacting the quality of life for all residents, and whereas Bob is known for his exceptional professionalism, dedication, and institutional knowledge as an assistant engineer, serving as a mentor and trusted resource for countless colleagues over the years, and whereas his long and distinguished career stands as a testament to the virtues of hard work, integrity, and a profound commitment to the City of Clifton. Now therefore, the governing body of the City of Clifton do hereby express our deepest gratitude to Bob Sillick in recognition of fifty years of outstanding service with the City of Clifton, and we extend our heartfelt congratulations on this monumental achievement, and wish for continued health, happiness, and success in the future. Thank you, Bob.
Hey, next we have a, we're gonna have a special presentation from Seig Valley Water Commission with us tonight, we have Jim Muller, he's the executive director, along with some other commissioners from the board. Yeah, just, just make sure the mic is on, but.
Can you hear?
Yeah. He's gonna give us a systems overview of what's been going on, and we've asked for you to come in, so, however you want to start.
Sure. So again, my name is, can you hear me okay? I don't wanna speak too loud. Good?
The closer, the better.
Closer, sorry.
Yeah.
Better? All right. So I just wanna thank the council for having me here today, and Commissioner Rizzi from Clifton, and Commissioner Friend from Clifton for joining me to give this update to the council. I have a brief presentation, it's about nine slides. We'll go through a system overview, the value of water, in terms of the water we provide, non-revenue water to the city, our lead service line replacement program, other major projects, storage reservoirs, water treatment, and water mains, hydrants and flushing, and then miscellaneous. You could pause me for questions at any time, or I could just move through this. I will say, we do have hard copies that we distributed to the council. Christine Vazelle is here from PVWC, she has hard copies, if anyone in the audience would like one. Chris, just raise your hand, and she can provide those as people need. Okay, so we'll keep going. So here's just an overview, there's two major sources of water for PVWC that we provide to our customers. One comes from the Wanacue Reservoir up north, about fifteen miles away, it's treated by the New Jersey District, sorry, North Jersey District Water Supply Commission, and they provide about thirty million, thirty-five million gallons per day of water, and the balance comes from the Passaic River, and it's treated at our Totowa, our Little Falls Treatment Plant, and it's forty-two million gallons per day on average that we provide from the Passaic River. Our retail customers, those are the cities and towns where we actually own and operate the water mains that bring the water to the houses. There's six hundred and fifty miles of water mains in our retail areas that include Clifton, Patterson, Passaic, as the owner cities of PVWC, Prospect Park, North Arlington, Lodi, Postbrook, and West Milford, and Highcrest in West Milford. There's also twenty-two wholesale customers where we do not own and operate the pipes that bring the water to the houses, but we provide what we call bulk water, and the utility that services that town does the rest, and takes care of the pipes and the service lines to the customers. So on average, it's about seventy-seven million gallons per day of water that we provide, and almost two hundred and fifty employees that work for the, work for the company. So the value of water, for the calendar year twenty twenty-four, PVWC provided the City of Clifton with an estimated three hundred thousand seventeen, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of non-revenue, i.e. it's free, water based on sixty-one metered accounts that are considered municipal, so there's no charge for that water, and there's fourteen fire lines for fire protection. I think over the last year or so, the metered water consumption has also been used to determine sewer treatment charges paid to the Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission, which is not to be confused with Passaic Valley Water Commission, it's a separate entity, but they do use our consumption. I will say, there's been some recent questions about some of the school accounts and the consumption that we provided. We've done a deeper dive on those, on those consumption readings, there are some errors we've found, and we are working with the City of Clifton to correct that, revise the consumption records, which should revise the billing, so we're in the process of doing that. My finance department is working closely with the city on that. So that's the value, just the annual, annual value of the, of the water we provide for free through the domestic lines and the fourteen fire lines for, for fire protection for municipal accounts. Lead service line replacements. So since the fall of twenty twenty-two, PVWC has removed almost sixteen hundred, one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven customer-owned lead service lines have been replaced in Clifton. Overall, we've replaced forty-seven hundred lines across Patterson, Clifton, Prospect Park, and Passaic, but, you know, about a third of those lines were just in Clifton, so that's tremendous success. I wanna credit the city, the council's support, the City of Clifton's support in terms of facilitating access to homes and helping us, so that's been a tremendous gain. There's about seventeen locations that are left, so again, we're at the tail end of the work, and thirty-three locations have continued to be non-responsive. We have provided those lists of who those folks are to, to the city in the past, we're happy to update that, but the program is nearing its end. You know, the contract's been ongoing for three years, we're looking to wrap that up and mobilize the contractor one last time, for the last round of replacements, and then that'll be it. So wanted to highlight that for the residents here and those who might be following the meeting, please, if you, if you're one of this, you know, if you know you have lead or if you're not sure, you can look it up on our website, or just contact us at nine seven three three four oh forty-three hundred, and we can help you determine if you still have lead, but if you do, please let us in, we're happy to replace that line for free to the customer. This is also a thirty-six million dollar program across all the cities I mentioned. The state is providing twenty-seven million dollar, it's a loan from the state, and twenty-seven million dollars will not have to be paid back, so it's a tremendous gain for the water payers as well, even if you don't have lead, this is being done essentially, you know, at twenty cents on the dollar, so it's been a tremendous success. But again, one of the messages is, if you still have, if you're one of the seventeen locations, or the thirty-three that haven't responded, please contact us, reach out, we continue to provide notices, and we'll continue to push that.
Jim, really quick, I'm sorry, when is the last day, when does the program end again? You said in a couple of months, it's winding down?
November is what we plan, before the winter, we'd like to, basically, the contractor should be mobilizing in the next week or two. There's about a hundred and fifty to two hundred across all the cities I mentioned, you know, seventeen are in, are in Clifton, plus the thirty-three non-responsive. Mobilize them toward the end of September, finish by the end of October, and try to get all the restoration work done ahead of the winter. So by the end of the year, we'd like to be done, and not, and not be coming back. So that's kind of the timeline we're under, so that we're mobilizing in a couple weeks, and basically, it's the month of October where we plan to get another couple hundred done and then be done.
So if we had to give a date, I mean, reach out October fifteen by then, because then you would need.
I would say by the end of this month, you should be reaching out either to PVWC or respond to the notices that are probably, that you've, you know, I can understand why certain people, not certain people, why people in general might not wanna answer their doors. Call us, we'll verify, we can do it on the phone. You don't have to let anybody in your house to verify that this is legitimate and we can schedule, we're happy to do that. But yeah, it's really by the end of this month, so, because once the contractor mobilizes this last time, that's pretty much it. You know, it's just costly to keep remobilizing for, say, a handful of locations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good, very good question.
Mayor, through you?
Yes.
Mayor, through you?
May you sue me?
No, 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 thank you, thank you, sir, for coming out tonight, and thank you with your constituents. Do you know when we are gonna start working on the roadways?
So, I don't run necessarily the roadways, do you mean, I have more to present on terms of what our plans are for underground infrastructure in Clifton? If that's what you mean by the roadways, if you, okay, so maybe in a couple of slides, I'll cover that, but there are plans we have, you know, for Clifton in terms of underground infrastructure, water main replacements and that, that type of thing, I'll talk about that in a couple minutes. Is, was that your question?
Okay.
Okay.
Just staying on this question with the lead service line, is it seventeen locations you still have to replace in conjunction with the thirty-three?
Correct.
The thirty-three locations that have not been responsive, are they behind in their water bills? Or so, is there a correlation? That's what I'm saying, and is the notice being sent with the water bill? Because obviously, if you, they're current with the water bill, you know they got the notice.
Understood. So I can't speak off the top of my head, that I don't believe they're all correlated, some of them might be past due, but it's multiple ways, it's not just with the water bill that we're doing the notices, it's door hangers, it's direct contact, and we've actually made phone calls too, from, from the company. We don't always have updated contact information, you know, people, whatever, depending on the location, people move in or, in or out, but, you know, happy to, again, provide the locations to the council, to whoever else, if you can, if you can help get the word out to these folks, but we are reaching the point where the window's closing, so that's kind of where we are.
And my last question with that, and I'll let you move on, do we know if they're owner occupied, or are they rental properties? Do we know that, or are they multifamily? I mean, thirty-three is not bad, considering the amount of, of customers in, in Clifton.
Right.
But it's still thirty-three, so that was my question, and maybe we can coordinate with the city to make sure that the contact information that we have, because my thought process is, if there's a mortgage on the property, the city can put your notice in to the mortgage company.
Okay.
Because the mortgage company won't want a lien on their property.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's where I was going.
And there's, you know, there's, there's potential fines that you can impose, which nobody wants to do.
We passed that, this council passed that to help you, but that was my thought, you know, mortgage company, they're gonna say, hey, wait a minute, you gotta get this done.
Right.
They have more leverage than you, me, and anybody else.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we can provide the information, absolutely, but like you said, it's also been a tremendous success, ninety-nine percent of the locations are addressed, right? We're down to maybe thirty-three non-responsive, so, but we'll continue, you know, as long as we're going. So that's lead, which is, which is really good progress. So just other major construction projects, our storage reservoirs, there's three of them, drinking water, open air, storage reservoirs, Levine Reservoir in Patterson. Levine Reservoir in Patterson is actually under construction, we issued notice to proceed in May. It's $41.8 million, two-year contract, so that is under construction. Our new street reservoir over in Woodland Park, we've instituted stormwater sewers there, storm sewers, in the last year and a half, or the last year, I should say. That was done with our in-house staff, I'll credit Mike Marata, who's here, my COO, and his staff who got that done, and there's a picture of that in the, in the upper right corner of, of one of those sewers, fairly, fairly large project, which we did in-house, again, to mitigate flooding. And then great notch, where we continue to look at water quality in, in that reservoir as well, and seeing what we can do to, you know, generally improve that. Our Little Falls Treatment Plant, our residuals handling facility, it's 40 to 50 years old, capital investment, we, the board awarded it the construction contract in July, 2.6 year duration for that, $31 million for, for a residual handling upgrade. You see the picture in the middle there of the, of the old facilities. So that's now in construction, which is great. High-rate settling upgrade, another part of the treatment process, $4.5 million under construction, and the filtration process, shafts and valves, $7 to $8 million is the bid we plan to award this month with the board, done our bid analysis and whatnot, and we'll have that under construction, hopefully in the next couple of months, that'll get going. So a lot of work there, you know, between the reservoirs and the treatment plant. The water mains, and I think that was the question, you know, the council member just asked. We have two, what we call on-call construction contracts that are advertising this week. They are valued at $11 million each, so it's a significant resource. So bids should be due, I believe it's a three-week bid period, so in mid-October, and the plan is, as long as we have valid bids and that it's a valid, we'll do our analysis, we'll recommend for the board to award those two contracts in October, and then we'll have $22 million worth of construction capability to get out and start replacing mains in the street. These are more focused on the more of the localized, smaller mains, the six-inch mains, eight-inch mains maybe that are older, you know, the 100 years old, and I have some examples today, you know, specific locations that I'll talk about. But those are advertising this week, and we hope to award next month at, at the board. A lot of, a lot of good resources being put in place.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
And then, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah. Listen, I'm glad you're replacing the water mains, but very important to me, are you folks clearly communicating with the city of Clifton to make sure that we don't double-hit some of these streets, that we don't mill and pave something, and then two weeks later, you guys show up and rip the whole street up?
For the planned work, yes, for emergencies, like if a water main breaks, and I'll, I'll speak to that, I think on the next slide or two slides from now. There are some times where there's street activity, like paving, it's water-intensive, sometimes they use the hydrants, and they really shouldn't, and then maybe not close the right way, and it can actually cause a water main break. So a freshly paved street, a day later, you see water coming up, and sometimes it's the paving activity that caused the break that we then have to dig up. So we do, for the, all the planned work, we are meeting regularly with the city of Clifton. I think our last meeting on some of our standalone projects was just two months ago, laying out what our plans were, a lot of good coordination there, and to make sure everyone's aware. We're doing that with all, all of the cities, not just Clifton. So yes, on the planned work. For emergencies, if there's a break, we have to go in and fix it, you know, and that's obviously not a great situation, but that's, we have to respond to the emergencies.
Mayor, I understand funding for the storage reservoirs has been pulled by the federal government, and that will result in a significant, and I dread it, because my bills are outrageous now, for the rate increase for the taxpayers. Is that true?
So for Levine Reservoir, we have a loan from the state, from New Jersey, from the water bank, so New Jersey DP and the I Bank. It's a low-interest loan for the 41.8 million, plus soft cost, so it's about a $53 million loan total. $10 million of that loan will be principal loan forgiveness, that we will not have to pay back, and that has not been pulled. That is a commitment that we've got from the state water bank for Levine Reservoir. I know, on, you know, it's the state revolving fund, which is funded through the federal government, there was proposals for maybe a 90% cutback on that nationally, you know, that, over time, that, that will impact. But for this particular project, we have a loan from the state, committed, closed. It, it's, it works, and I know you came from investments, it works as a short-term loan first, and when we finish the construction, it converts to a long-term bond, but that's been committed for Levine, so $10 million will not have to be paid back, and the rest is a balance of low interest or no interest.
But why are we hearing that there will be a rate, and it came from people at PNC, your company? Last week down in, where were you in? Conference? Last week or the week before?
Okay. I, I don't believe I was, you didn't hear that from me, right?
Not from you.
Okay.
Not from you.
So I'm not...
I have sources.
No, fair enough. I'm, I'm not sure what, what the source is, but I do know that short-term loan is committed, we're committed to a low interest, combined, no interest and combined principal loan forgiveness from the state water bank for that project, that much I know. I'm not sure what else you heard.
Okay. Then maybe you better send out a memo to your staff that they shouldn't be saying that publicly to people.
Okay. Fair. If you want to talk offline about, you know, we could, but that's fine.
So is that loan, is that out of that, like, that state I Bank or W Bank program?
I, the I, state water bank, but yeah, the I Bank.
So they give you the loan, zero loan interest, and I think before you start paying it back, sometimes they actually forgive a portion of it, correct?
So $10 million of that will be forgiven, so it'll convert from a 41.8 short-term loan, where we pay out from that, to like a 31.8 million. It's actually 53 million, so it'll be 43 million, because there's other costs covered by the loan.
And to my colleagues, these are the I Bank and W Bank that I was talking about, that other towns are using, that we're not. So we need to start.
So, so that's where we're on, on water mains. The larger standalone projects, they're in design, they are more complicated, a higher, and I'll show you some examples, the higher traffic flow areas or larger mains, where we have, we need a more thorough design, they're in design and plan to bid those in the next six to nine months. So the short-term contracts, this week they will advertise, we will award, the plan is to award those two, $22 million worth of construction, not just for Clifton, for all the retail areas, Patterson, Passaic, Prospect Park, Lodi, and North Arlington. But those will be awarded next month, and we'll, we'll move quickly into localized projects, and then the larger projects will be in the next six to nine months, start bidding as discrete projects. So here's two examples. One on the left is Robin Hood Park area, you know, replacing existing mains with eight-inch mains and extending the existing 12-inch main. It can, actually connects, in this location, the company invested in lining certain parts of this area about 10-plus years ago. This project with new pipe will address areas that weren't addressed 10-plus years ago. So it really creates the full network here of getting the older mains out, and some of these mains are 100 years old and subject to frequent breaks or, or other issues. So approximately two miles, 10,000 linear feet of new mains, estimated at $5.5 million. So that's one of the on-calls, so once these contracts are registered, this is the type of project we'll be ramping up and doing in the short term. And then the second area in Clifton is Darty Drive area, replacing the existing mains with, again, eight-inch mains, it connects areas, same, same thing. Some of these areas, and I'll show you on the next map where these fit, some areas were lined, these were not, we're going to replace with new mains. Another 9,000 feet in that second area. So this is almost four miles of mains between the two, about $10 million of combined work. So one of those contracts that we'll award next month will basically address these two areas in Clifton.
And how old is this piping?
The existing piping, it's, I have some details on some of the other locations, but in general, it's between 80 and 100 years old.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So here's an example of standalone project areas, and the circles on the left, you know, I hesitate to use this, but, oh, there, it worked, that's a miracle, it worked. These two circles are the two areas that I just showed you as on-calls. Those are the on-call areas. This large, Piaget and Paulson, this is one of the standalone projects. As you know, very high-traffic area, number one. So, and the mains, these mains are 1913, you know, 1910, these are 120, 110-year-old mains. We're looking four to half, four to five million for Piaget, 1913 main, 4,300 linear feet of 12-inch, putting in new, and 2,600 linear feet of eight-inch on new. There have been recurring breaks, this is a, what we call one of those frequent flyer spots, where we know over the years, we're back here a lot. So again, just based on break history, this makes a lot of sense, it's also a heavily trafficked area, and some of these mains are shallow. So the heavily trafficked area does not help a shallow main. We're looking to put them a little bit deeper as well. Paulson, 10,000 linear feet of 12-inch ductile iron pipe would be installed there, eight to nine million dollars there. Again, recurring breaks, these are known as, as difficult areas. We're looking to decrease the pipe size from 16 to 12, which will actually let us put it deeper, it won't be as close to the surface, and capacity-wise, it should be fine, and also create a secondary loop if there is a break or a problem. Those secondary loops help there, prevent there being an impact to a customer, like water can still be provided. So that's some of the gain. So these are fairly expensive, which is why we're bidding them out separately, but they're really high value and areas where we're back all the time, you know, recurring breaks, that should put us in a much better situation. So these are, you know, that's about $20 million worth of work that I'm detailing here, short-term. You know, the, the on-call contract, again, will be awarded next month. This, these two areas should be in the next six to nine months, we'll have a bid on the street. So this is all within the next year, shovel in the ground, real work in, in Clifton, $20 million or so to replace critical areas of infrastructure. We're not done there, there's 200 miles of pipes in Clifton. So this is the start, you can see, it's fairly expensive, but high value. We'll be back. I mean, this is, this is going to be a, a long-term program, you know, in terms of, every few years, we're going to be putting out, we have a, we have lists of, you know, 30 or 40 projects that will just be every year, putting out one or two projects and trying to address critical areas. As, as one of the council people mentioned, as, as funding might become available, we put out more projects to take advantage of funding. You know, so there's, there's an ebb and a flow to this over the long term, but again, this is a major investment just in the next year in, in Clifton. So we just wanted to highlight that. Hydrants and flushing. So at the end of 2024, which is only, I can't believe it, only nine months ago, we completed a large-scale hydrant replacement program, almost $12 million, $1.5 million, not just in Clifton, but across Passaic, Patterson, Prospect Park, well, Prospect Park, we didn't replace any, but Lodi and North Arlington, we replaced almost 1,200 hydrants, they were just old, out of service, you know, obviously not a good condition. Clifton got 330 of them were in the city of Clifton, brand-new hydrants, about 20% of the total system was replaced. So this is, this is just a great, it was a great investment into, you know, obviously fire protection is extremely important, so we're, we're proud of that. Some of the water mains that we'll be replacing will further help. When you have a 100-year-old main or an 80-year-old main that maybe has lost some capacity, we're going to replace that with larger mains, a six-inch converted to an eight-inch, some of the projects I just showed you. That will further help on pressure and, and fire protection as well. But the base was just replacing the hydrants. So, you know, discolored water, we absolutely know this is an issue in Clifton, and we do, we do get phone calls on it. Over the last three months, we've gotten, so this is mid-June to, say, mid-September, about 145 complaints across 119 accounts, so there's, some people call more than once, that's, that's all that, that is. So there's about 119 locations where we, we do get the discolored water complaints, we will deliver red begon if, if somebody's laundry was impacted. We, we have also stood up for the last two years, a flushing program more frequently, excuse me, in problematic areas. So instead of an annual flushing program, which is a base, we, we flush every hydrant in our, our system, unless there's a drought, or there's, there's a reason why we can't, we'll look to flush at least every hydrant once. For these problem areas, we look to get out there at least four times a year, and in some areas, we even put auto flushers in to, to flush almost every night, because it's a problem, until we can get in and replace the mains that need to be replaced over time. So that's something we continue to work on, and this is something, when I was here in September of almost three years, well, it was about, almost exactly three years ago, I highlighted the illegal hydrant usage or unauthorized hydrant usage. We, this is actual drone footage that was captured by one of our staff of a contractor lining up a hydrant, and you can see, they queued up about three or four trucks to, to go on that hydrant and fill up with water, and then go out and do their paving or whatever they needed to do. If you do see this, please report it, and I will credit the council and, and folks for getting the word out. We do get calls from residents saying, there's a contractor on the hydrant outside my house, he's swimming, he's filling up a swimming pool, or he's, you know, we'll send people out immediately, tell them to cease and desist, we'll write letters, you know, there's, and there's certain things, I think, if, if the city could also ramp up with fines or whatnot, that's, we can't levy fines, you know, that's done through the cities, but we do report it, and to your, to the credit of the residents, they report it to us, and we, we, we react. But it does happen, it's not fictitious, and they're very quick. I think this whole operation might have taken, for the, for the major truck that they were filling, I think it took 90 seconds. So it's really quick. We try to respond right away, about 90 seconds. It's, well, it's high, that's why they like the hydrants, because it's very high-pressure, so it fills up their truck quickly. They don't... I don't, I forget, this might be 1,000 gallons or something like that, maybe 500 gallons. We, we could deliver, I mean, 1,000 gallons per minute, you know, that's the kind of flow, 1,500 gallons per minute is the kind of flow you'll see from a, from a hydrant. So you have a 1,000 or 2,000 gallon truck, you fill that up in a couple of minutes, it's quick.
Okay. Can I ask you a question?
Please.
About this colored water.
Yes.
Two, two actually. One, is your only baseline of data for homes affected by discolored water, people calling in, do you have any other ways of measuring brown water other than the calls you get?
So, very good question. So complaint-driven is obviously the customers reporting what they're experiencing, we don't have sensors in every home telling us what the water quality is at the faucet. So yeah, that is one of the main, you know, the complaint-driven data, when people do call and complain, we map it, and that's what I'm showing you here, we'll actually map it and try to figure out, is there a cluster, is there something going on? When we do get the calls, and my customer service takes these calls, they, they'll know, oh, there's two contractors in, in the area who are using hydrants unauthorized, or there was a water main break, because water main breaks themselves can cause discolored water. So it depends on what the issues are, and they'll communicate that back to the customer, but what we'll try to do is go and fix it.
Okay. So if I were to tell you that, I, I mean, and I, I personally know several of them, and I'm sure there are others, people who get discolored water so chronically that they've given up on calling and complaining, is, does that, would that be alarming to you if I told you that that is happening in Clifton?
I mean, I, I know it happens, and it's fatigue, people get fatigue, where I've complained, I've complained. We do, we do take this seriously, we do map it, we'll, we'll send people out day-of and knock on a door and, and see what's going on, and like I said, there could be various causes of that. I remember last summer, there were, there was sewer cleaning going on, and I think it was, it might have been Revine Park, somewhere over in, in the areas I was just highlighting, where they, our, my folks went out, and they were saying, the contractor's coming to this dead end, and they're filling up off that hydrant. So it depends on what the issues are. Some of it's the mains themselves, and sometimes it could even be the water quality, you know, there's two different sources of water. You can get algae during certain parts of the, the period, our treatment process is a little different than North Jersey's, so the summertime, you can get certain algae that come through that, it's not unsafe, but it could cause a taste odor color issue and cause discoloration. So there's a, there's certain, it depends on what the location is and the cause. But I'm not surprised if people get fatigue.
What would your message be to those residents who may be watching, that, who have that situation where they're so fatigued, or they get it so frequently to the tune of multiple times a week perhaps? Are they, are they expected to call that often? Is that your advice to them?
Well, I do encourage, if people are experiencing discolored water or other issues, yes, I'm going to encourage them to call us. I know my staff will go out, you know, to residents multiple times, they've taken the meter off and flushed the internal plumbing of the house to, to make sure that's clear. So we do, we don't take it lightly, and we'll try to do everything we can to intervene in a positive way and correct the situation. I know, just, you know, auto flushers will look to put on chronic areas where they'll flush every night at three in the morning, so it shouldn't cause an issue, you know, when people are sleeping, but just to make sure that water's fresh. There's certain areas of the system, I think it was, you know, basically World War II or post-World War II, Clifton really grew. You could see it in the water main age, where there's a lot of mains placed. It wasn't the best quality of main at the time, it was just how it was made. You know, and there's certain dead ends where it's, it doesn't, it doesn't flow through the way you'd want to if you were designing it, you know, the right way. Over time, we'll correct those areas, it's going to be over time, it's not going to happen overnight. I wish it could, but we'll, we'll look to flush more frequently and freshen that water. We can put auto flushers on, which can flush daily. Those are the kind of interventions we'll look in the short term. But yeah, we'll encourage them to continue to call in, we'll continue to send people out. And like I said, we're putting twenty million of capital into the Clifton system in the next year to try to upgrade some of these, some of these old mains and problem areas.
All right, my last question, and then I'll, I'll let this proceed. Just for me, my background is in the arts and communications, so I, this is way outside my wheelhouse, so I'm going to show you a picture of, of some water, okay? That's not iced tea, that's water, that came out of somebody's sink. Just for me, a layman, what is that? What is in the, what is physically in the water that is making it look like that?
Right. So that, that's extreme, what you, what you just showed, obviously. But in general, the discolored water is, it's two basic sources. One is, and that's, what you just showed me is probably iron in, in very concentrated, you know, you know, it, when we open hydrants to flush, you'll get sediment that can settle in those, in those, in those pipes. You get iron, tuberculosis, that kind of things. When we first flush, it comes out that color, it runs clear pretty quick. That's why we do the flushing, we want to run it clear. We don't want that stuff to accumulate. If you don't flush at all, it'll be like that, you know, forever. So we, we do experience that, in general, it's either algae, which that's not, or, or iron, and it's, it's absolutely aesthetically displeasing, right? That's not something you'd want to drink, cook with, you know, do, do anything with. So again, and, you know, again, depending on the location, we'd look to, to flush, for something that extreme, my staff in, in the past have taken off the meter and flushed the whole house, right? Where we don't know what's, what's trapped in the line or how it got in there, but we just want to get it out. And that's the kind of stuff we'll do, you know, in real time, where we've sent, we're qualified to do it, we have really good people, and they'll do that for customers. So again, that's something we would look to, to address.
Mayor, staying on that, it's one thing to have the people say they're cool, and I know that there's certain areas, in fact, we have, you know, by Bender Drive, up Mountain View Drive, and also recently, we've had people come up to this mic from Friar Lane, and they showed a filter in their house that was one day old. I don't see anything on these that you're addressing those areas first. In my humble opinion, those areas, I mean, as she sits in the audience, Judy Basford has had complained about brown water for years, more so than not. Why not address those areas first? You know there are problem areas. Address those areas. If it's the old pipes that have iron in it, address those areas. Just to have people say, just keep calling, do you know how frustrating that is? I mean, and besides the money and flushing and flushing. It's fine to flush the pipes in the system, but what about their hot water heaters? That sediment includes in mine. I have two hot water heaters in my house. Could you, the sediment on the, in that would collect in those hot water heaters, there's no way they're lasting ten years, which is the average life of, of a hot water heater. So that's really, that's like a Band-Aid on a, a large problem. But again, why don't you address those areas first? It's one thing to say, keep calling, call, 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 but I think people are looking for solutions. They're sick of calling. And quite frankly, your bills are astronomical. So to pay for brown water that you can't use, and then have people say, just keep calling, really pisses people off, and I, and I, I can understand that.
No, understood, and hopefully that's not all I'm saying, is just keep calling. There's, there's more we do.
But why not fix those problem areas first?
Right.
We know them. You, you've been here three years ago, Judy was here, that area, now we're hearing that Friar Lane is. We've had, what, two, three people come up? So those are two problem areas.
Right.
Address the problem areas first.
Right. No, understood. So the areas I'm highlighting, particularly in the, the on-call contracts, the reason why we're highlighting those areas, because there was interventions done ten or so years ago that we want to finish, and that's appropriate for the short term. Some of these other areas are harder to address. It's going to be a much larger project. If I could, if I could, with an on-call project, go into two blocks, replace water mains, I'd do it. It's much more extensive than that. And there's other pipes that have to be started with, and we got to work our way in because of the way the system is designed, which I can't, I can't just fix overnight. So that's, that's, unfortunately, that's where, you know, those are, but we're not, those, those projects are being queued up, they're just larger, harder to address areas. If I could do it in a couple blocks, it would have been done already, frankly.
Okay. Three years ago, you sat here in that same seat, we had the same discussion about, and I'm going to say Judy's area, which is Mountain View and Bender and up in that area. Three years later, there's no solution. Three years later, the projects started, or not that area. So can you sit here today and give that, Judy and the residents of that area, and now Friar Lane, what, when you're going to fix the problem in that area?
So what we've done in the three years is gotten an eight-hundred-million-dollar capital plan approved by the board in 2023. So when I was here three years ago, we were formulating that plan and working with the board. We got that approved two years ago. And since that time, we've got design contracts in place, we're getting construction contracts on the street, and we're addressing critical areas. So that's what we've done, and it's not just call, call, call. But the areas that these folks live in are harder to address. If I could go in, in two or three blocks and replace a six-inch main with an eight-inch main, it would be done already. And it's just, it's, it's just more complicated in those areas. So there's a considerable amount of money in the capital plan, we continue to advance designs on discrete projects, I continue to look at that big triangle area right outside the Great Knot Service area, it's extensive. I think it's five thousand or so houses in that area, right? There's more than just those, those two blocks, there's other blocks that, and again, the short term, this is not the long-term solution, has been, get out and flush more frequently, put in auto flushers. That's not the long-term solution. But the project that's going to address that, or multiple phases of projects, it's, this is something we're still, we're still designing while we're trying to get short-term solutions in, in place.
So basically, you're, you can't, sitting here, you can't give these people a timeframe. It, will it be in the capital projects for next year? Will it be in the capital projects for the year after? So sitting here, three years later, there still is no solution. I have three other questions. Estimated bills, I mean, getting a lot of calls, you know, I got an estimated bill, and I don't like estimated bills.
Right.
You, can you please explain to the residents, because I think the majority of residents in this city have gotten estimated water bills, what the issue is that, and how is it going to be corrected? And my last question is, and I'm going to call it a service charge, before you use an ounce of water, I know, I'm thinking of my own bill, you charge service fees, is it called?
A fixed, a fixed, the fixed charge.
Do you charge that service fee for businesses?
I'd have to go back, you know, I don't know off the top of my head.
I think you better, I think you better look at that, because I don't think businesses get charged that sewer, that fee. And if that's the case, I sure as heck want to know why residents are. And those are all my questions.
And I'll second that, because that's concerning if.
Me too.
Okay.
Especially since mine is a couple of hundred dollars before I use a drop of water.
Right. Councilwoman Kolo Jay, I believe, waiting.
Yeah, so if I could just clarify, when you say businesses, you mean commercial properties?
Commercial, yes.
Okay.
Commercial.
Because I know that the commercial property that, that I have does get that bill.
Okay.
So at least one business is getting, is getting.
Okay, and I, I'll go back and look at it, I, I'm not going to give you an answer, you know, off the cuff, I'll go back and look.
Please look across.
Now, I know, I know you're not.
Clifton, Passaic, Patterson.
Sure.
Now, I know you're not necessarily familiar with the geography of Clifton, but if you could back up to the slide with the two on-call project slides.
Here or here, which, where, this one or this one?
There you go.
Yep.
So the one to the right that you had up on there, that would include Doherty, that we were just talking about.
Correct.
So, you know, the fact that we're kind of saying that we're not doing anything, and you've got a slide up there that says we're doing something.
Yeah.
I thi, I think in fairness, we need to recognize that, you know, listen, fees are high, and infrastructure is expensive, and we can fix it all tomorrow, but you're also going to have a bill that's like five times as high as what you're accustomed to. So, you know, the idea that, you know, we're moving through infrastructure projects, and I agree with my colleagues, you know, there needs to be a priority towards the places that are, that are problem areas, but, you know, I'm looking at this slide and saying, it seems to me that you guys have been working on identifying problem areas.
Thank you.
You want to continue?
So we're almost done, I'm sorry.
Continue.
Yeah, no problem. Here's the flushing zones, this is a map on our, on our website that you can follow progress with flushing. There's fourteen zones in Clifton. We'll typically start left, left to right, so you'll, we'll kind of go in order, one, two, three, four, and then, and then move through, move through the zones. The quarterly flushing areas, it's hard to read on the screen, but there are hard copies available. You know, some of the areas that you mentioned are on this, on this list for quarterly flushing, more frequent flushing. The feedback we have gotten from folks, and I'm not talking about the specific folks, y, y, you mentioned, Councilwoman, but from other folks, is that that has made a difference, and which is why we do it. We're not just doing it to do it, we're doing it to make a difference. We've also put in the auto flushers in certain locations, and I want to consider that again with some of the locations that continue to come up, and maybe look at even more auto flushers or whatnot, until we have more major capital in, in, in those areas. So this is just a list of the quarterly flushing. And we've started, we do try to avoid major holidays, like Jewish holidays or something like that, we don't want to negatively impact people, you know, cooking or whatnot, so we're, we're trying to be sensitive to that. But this is our schedule through the end of October with the streets. Again, hard copies are available, we can email this and, and make it available, and it's also on our website. And then that is it. So thank you, council members, and I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
I got a few questions.
Would they be willing to take questions from the public, or?
I would hope so.
Since we report to them.
Anyone from the public wish to come up and ask a question?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Mayor, no one wishes to be heard, close the meeting.
Here, Tony.
Mayor, no one wishes to be heard, close the meeting.
Ninety-two Mountain View Drive. I've been waiting for thirty years for my water to be corrected, thirty years. I even took off one day, got a babysitter, and went down to the Passaic Valley Water Company meeting, and we pleaded our case. You get up in the morning, you go to the bathroom, I never noticed it until we changed our, our fixtures in our bathroom, which I got permits for, oh, by the way, so it's legal, so nobody has to go and open that. Okay? Not really, because tomorrow they'll be opening it. It's really not fair that you have to pay more money for your hair color because it oxidizes. I can't buy white or beige towels because they become brown. I don't know what the color of the clothing anymore is, getting all tingy. I don't want that stuff that you put in because if you open it up, it's toxic to breathe. So why would I be putting it on my clothes? I have sensitive skin. Mountain View Drive has experiences, we have a water thread that we text each other, don't use the water. I don't like going to work dirty. I like to take a shower before I go to work, so I'm fresh every day, but I have to be, some late days, I have to be late because I have to keep on running the water. So I'm going to request that I get a refund for the last thirty years for my sewer bill. I don't want to pay it anymore, because most of that money that I'm wasting is flushing and, and running the sinks and the, and the, the water in my house to get clean water. And flushing it makes it only worse. We have an end stop on Mountain View Drive, it has to be replaced. There's nine blocks in Clifton that have end stops. They have the same problem as me. I don't know why, maybe because I'm closer to it, when we turn it on, it backs into my house. But I'm, I'm known as the dirty water lady in Clifton, and it's not funny anymore. I don't like that title, I want to get rid of it. I want clean water, it's 2025, I pay premium money for my water bill, it's due, I have to pay it by the fourth, or I'll be late, and you'll shut me off. But I pay for my water bill, I want to know why I can't have clean water. And I want to know this, do you pay a sewer bill when you flush the hydrants? Who pays for that water that's being wasted? Thank you.
Good point. Because we have check, we have check zones through the city, and that water goes through the check zone, so that we're being charged more money in our system, which then we have to raise rates to our residents because of that. So you're flushing now four times versus once, so that's four times more of the cost. Good point, Judy, thank you.
Gary.
I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could just correct, because I don't think that the sewers are on meters, not the water. No, the sewers. Passaic Valley Sewage Commission measures the sewer part of it. That's, that's what they're billing us on, not what, what's flowing into, it's what we're sending to, to them.
Go ahead, Gary.
Good evening, Gary Perino. I'd like to make a suggestion. On our city website, could we please have a section with these folks' numbers? Because I don't know who, who they are, I don't know their names or anything, but for the residents to call them directly, if they're the representatives of the city of Clifton, I'd, I'd like that. And I just wanted to, to say that I got four, I've had estimated bills for two years because of a screw-up that you folks had. I got just on Monday, I believe it was, four emailed bills with different numbers on them. I called the customer service, and I have to tell you, the person that I spoke to was very rude. Thank you.
I just wanted to add to, to Gary's comment, because I think that's a great idea, if we can put our, our two commissioners on our website. But I'd like to make a suggestion to Passaic Valley Water as well. I know that if I go to the PVWC's website and I want to contact the commissioner, I have to go through the board secretary. And so I don't know how many of those messages may necessarily make it to my commissioners, it seems like an easy fix. I think you have a page somewhere that shows the seven commissioners that are on Passaic Valley Water. If they can all have an email address as well, so that, as Gary said, we can contact the people who are supposed to directly be advocating for us, that would probably be very helpful.
Yes, sure. Anyone else wish to be heard from the public on this topic?
Just water right now.
On Passaic Valley Water. Okay.
I just got a couple of questions, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, if you have, Tony has.
Sorry, you're stuck with me. So my colleague brought up the one with coordinating better with the administration, which I know we're doing, that before we pave our roads, because we've seen our roads get dug up three times between utilities, so I'm glad we're working better with that. Thank you for the PowerPoint presentation, very informative. Two other ones. One of my pet peeves is, and it's a very big pet peeve, you leave something the way you got it. I talked to you about this a couple of years ago. You have subcontractors. They come to our home, they dig up in front of our house, they dig up the grass, they change out the piping. It gets replaced with rocks. It's not getting replaced with topsoil, because they're digging up, then they're trying to throw topsoil, uh, seed on top, but you can't grow grass seed when it's filled with rocks. I'm going to show you pictures, I dug up my house like ten years ago with big buckets. A friend of mine just had a pipe change in front of her house on Campbell Ave, and her family just dug up rocks and rocks. So I want a commitment from you all, that you will put in the contract for your subcontractors moving forward, when you dig up our homes in front of our homes, that it's left with some type of six-inch base of topsoil. So can I get that commitment, moving forward, that, that will be in new contracts for your people?
Absolutely, and some of this we do in-house too, but yeah, that, it shouldn't be rock, we shouldn't be trying to grow grass on rock, so, one hundred percent.
Okay. So that's the past, we'll move forward. The second one is, about at least fifteen, twenty years ago, the fire department started doing the hydrant flushing for Passaic Valley Water. Well, just like your costs go up, so do ours, we haven't been making adjustments. I was just looking up, it's been at least fifteen years at that fifty-dollar rate. So either we're doing them now at half price than what we used to, or to adjust that for inflation, it should be seventy-five dollars. So I don't know if we have a contract with Passaic Valley Water or not, but if we don't, I'll be asking my colleagues, just like you're getting more from us, our costs are going up to balance out that, um, cost.
Are you referring to the inspections?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Take a look at that, too.
Okay.
I know we did provide tablets to the fire department so they can make the inspections into the GIS, which has been great.
And I, yes, a lot more straightforward.
And your department's been great to work.
And you're getting a good deal, because I looked up online, and those hydrant flushes usually cost about 200 bucks apiece.
Yeah.
And we're right now still doing it for 50 bucks, probably 20 years from now, so we need to work on that.
Okay.
And lastly, repaving? That's my last question. Again, this is for all utilities. There needs to be a schedule that after it's dug up, that the repaving job is done. I know it needs a few months to settle, but we're going to Irma Ave right now. PSENG supposedly dug that up five-plus years ago. It still hasn't been repaved, so.
Okay.
Another commitment, after you dig up the road, that within a timely manner, three months, six months after settlement, you repave the road. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Before we go, I just want to thank the council for inviting us here this evening to make the presentation and to hear the issues that you have concern about on behalf of the residents. I can assure you that at every meeting, I ask the same question: Where are we with our five-year plan? Where are we with our 10-year plan? And I can assure you that we're going to become even more aggressive in addressing the issues so that the residents of Clifton and all the residents of Passaic, all the customers of Passaic Valley get the finest water and at a low cost, which we are amongst the lowest in the state of New Jersey in terms of our cost. And, you know, we hear you, and we hope that we won't have to come back to answer your questions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you as well, and, you know, hopefully this is a productive meeting. If you need us to be here on a more regular basis, you know, we're happy to do that as well.
I was actually going to ask if someone would come, like, on a quarterly basis, one of you.
I think it should be a monthly basis. Because, you know, since Marge Bessel got hired half a century ago, we always had someone on this council who was a liaison to the Water Commission and would give a monthly report on what happened. And we don't have that anymore. And I think you can see by what we had tonight and the length of this presentation. I don't think we need fancy slides, and we certainly don't need an executive director. But if our two commissioners can work out a schedule so that they can be here every month after a meeting, just to give us highlights of what happened, give our public the ability to kind of say, hey, I need you to advocate for me. Here's what's going on, any issues that we may have as well. I think that if we can work out some sort of schedule where you guys are coming, you know, every other, well, for you guys it'd be every other month, but we would have someone here every month that would keep us in the loop. Because I think it's something that's been missing for the last nine months and something we should bring back.
No.
It can give a written report, too. A written report.
Well, yeah, a written report's nice, and we get the minutes from the meeting as a written report every time the board secretary sends it over to us. So that's not an issue of getting anything written. It's just the ability to be able to actually meet someone who may be able to help.
I like that idea. I'm with that.
And just to mention quickly, I do put my monthly executive director report on pvwc.com. You might be looking for more than that, which I appreciate, but it is a monthly report out that's available. I'll just offer that. That's all.
Edward, all that, all that's in cyberspace, so I hear you, but the face-to-face is. And Mayor, to you and the administration, can we get these slides put up on our Facebook page and the internet of the flushing schedule, please?
Yes, Jim.
And on cable? Please.
Yeah, Jim, did you give, is this in my email on the PDF, this slide? The hard copy?
We can deliver that, yeah. We could send it to you.
Yes, and we do have a very good relationship. I've called Jim a number of times, which a friendly had come in my office. So there is, there is a nice communication line between myself and that organization. I do appreciate it.
And I appreciate you, Gary. Thanks. Thank you for coming out. Drive safe.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you again.
Thank you. Just give it one second, Kathleen, until they just clear the room, and then we'll continue. Okay, can we have the approval of the minutes, please?
Motion to approve the minutes, Mayor.
Second.
Communications.
Mayor, we have various communications from the city manager, as stated on the agenda. Mayor, we have communication, meaning, meeting minutes of the Advisory Board of Health of April 8th, May 13th, June 10th. Meeting minutes of the Environmental Commission for April 9th, June 18th. Minutes of the North Jersey District Water Supply Commission for July 23rd. Meeting minutes of Clifton Historical Advisory Commission for June 5th. Meeting minutes of Hazardous Materials Control Board for April 23rd and May 21st.
Okay, first reading ordinance.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Second reading of the ordinances.
Go ahead.
8,029-25, we have an ordinance to amend, revise, supplement Chapter 273 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Housing Standards, more particularly Section 273-25 thereof entitled Emergency Orders, amend the administrative fee.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move a public portion be closed, and the ordinance adopted on final affirmative vote.
Second. Roll call.
Councilman Damato.
Yes.
Councilman Gibson.
Oh, Bill, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
He gave a thumbs up.
He did.
I don't know. I think he's having trouble with the... Robin, he's on mute.
All right. I think we got a thumbs up. Yes?
They'll give us a thumbs up if you're a yes, and a thumbs down if you're a no, because we don't have audio.
Thumbs up.
There you go. He's a yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Ordinance passed. Ordinance 8030-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 375 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Sewer Connection Fee, increases connection fee.
A public hearing will be held on this ordinance. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mayor, if no one wishes to be heard, I move that the public hearing be closed.
And I move to adopt this on second reading.
You got to give me a second on the closing first.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Hold on. Because, Mayor, I listened to the concerns that my colleagues had at our last meeting, because again, I don't think that the average homeowner should be treated the same way as a developer in our community. And when I proposed an exemption for people who are doing a small addition less than 20%, there were some concerns about the starting point of where that may be. I know that Mr. Siano had reached out to me, and he's still working on trying to find how many 4,000 and 5,000 square-foot houses are in Clifton, and I'm sure he'll have that soon enough. But with that in mind, I would like to make an amendment to this to exempt any homes that have an existing square footage of 2,500 square feet and are going to do an addition that is less than 20% of that existing square footage. This should settle the concerns of people who were worried about a 3,000-square-foot house being able to turn into a 3,800-square-foot house. So this exemption would protect the average homeowner and not force them to pay the same $2,500 hookup fee that we're looking to get from people who are making money off of our community. And so I would hope that there is a second to trying to protect that.
Second.
I object. You weren't on the prevailing side. You charged, you tried this last meeting. I mean, you know, it's like a second bite of the apple. You don't keep going, you just keep going. So you weren't on the prevailing.
It's not the same, I know.
Last time.
It's not the same amendment.
Okay, well, I need a roll call, because. You got a first and a second.
I'll repeat that, since there seems to be, you know, a little issue with this. Any home that has existing square footage of 2,500 square feet that is going to put on an addition that is less than 20% of their existing square footage will be exempt from this ordinance and not treated the same as a developer.
And Mayor, I'm going to go on the record and say, just like last meeting.
Yep.
You had three weeks to share this with your colleagues, to share with the administration, to put it through the city engineer, to get clarifications, to work things out, and you actually had the audacity in doing it again, that you want us to make an irrational decision of you just throwing another hand grenade out there. So if you wanted this, you had all the opportunity to work this into the legislation, bring it up to your colleagues, bring it up to the administration, put it through the city engineer, that we almost made a huge mistake last meeting, so I'm not voting for it.
Okay, well, we're in the middle of a roll call.
But I've heard, I heard my council colleague, and I appreciate.
Call the question. Call the question.
I heard, I heard my council colleague, and I appreciate the suggestion, so I'm going to make a motion to table this ordinance until I have the opportunity to share that.
You had six months to work with us. And now here we are.
I have a motion on the floor.
But first, you had a motion on the floor for the amendment.
I have a first motion on the floor, so let's vote on that, and then we'll.
So are you withdrawing your amendment?
No, I believe.
Okay, so you can't have two motions on the table.
In protecting the little guy.
Grant standing.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor.
First motion to amend?
Yes.
Councilman Damato?
No to the amendment.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
No.
Councilwoman Pino?
I don't understand the resistance. This is a compromise. Yes to amend.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Absolutely not. We went through this.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes to amend that protects a small person.
Three yes, four no. Motion failed.
Next.
So are we going to have a motion back on the ordinance?
To approve this on second reading. An ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 375 Code of the City of Clifton entitled Sewer Connection Fee, increases connection fee.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion.
Six months. This has been worked on for six months, and not a single person who worked on this.
Call the question.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, we just, we also have to open up the public comment.
Sorry, did already.
We did.
We did?
Yeah.
Six months. We've worked on this for six months, and not a single person who worked on it gave a darn about the average homeowner.
Okay, well, we have a roll call, so.
Councilman Damato?
I've said it every step of the process. We need the money. I don't want to keep relying on tax raises. This is an optional fee if you wish to amend your home, so I'm voting yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
No.
Councilman Latona?
Seven years, could have created legislation, being an elected official, chose not to. Obstructionist, yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
No.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Talk about dysfunction. Just look at this. Of course, yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
No.
Four yes, three no. Ordinance passed. Ordinance 8031-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 296 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Landscapers.
A public hearing will be held on this motion. Does anyone wish to be heard? The ordinance, sorry.
Mayor?
Yes.
You should step off today as for the vote.
Oh, yes, of course.
No one wishes to be heard. We'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. Second. We need a motion on the ordinance. Second. Hearing done. We'll have a roll call.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
They ran out of hand grenades to throw, so we can finally say yes. Fix this.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes, we're getting quarterly reports. The minute this starts losing money, it's going.
Mayor Grabowski is abstaining. That's six yes, one abstain, zero no. Ordinance passed.
First reading.
Ordinance 8032-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Section 439-37 thereof entitled Handicap Parking on Streets, deletes one handicap space.
Move it on first.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Ordinance 8033-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Section 439-38 thereof entitled Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residents, adds seven restricted handicap spaces.
Move it on first.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Ordinance passed. An ordinance 8034-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Section 439-38 thereof entitled Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residents, deletes five restricted handicap spaces.
Move it on first.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Ordinance 8035-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Section 439-38 thereof entitled Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residents, amends 10 handicap parking placard numbers.
Move it on first.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Damato?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Kolojay?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula?
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Ordinance 8036-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 439 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Section 439-27 of the City of Clifton entitled Vehicles and Traffic, more particularly Section 439-27, thereof entitled Turn Prohibitation, Amends Prohibited Certain Turns at Lakeview Avenue.
Move it on first.
Second.
Councilman Damato.
Yes.
Councilman Gibson.
Yes.
Councilman Koloje.
Yes.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Ordinance 87-37-25, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 349 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Permit Parking on Residential Streets and Municipal Lots, Article 1, entitled Residential Streets, more particularly Section 349-2, thereof entitled Restricted Streets, Arthur Street.
Move it on first.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Damato.
Yes.
Councilman Gibson.
Yes.
Councilman Koloje.
Yes.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. An ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 273 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Housing Standards, Adds Article Four, Five, Bed Bug Control.
Move it on first.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Damato.
Bed bugs are nasty business, yes.
Councilman Gibson.
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Koloje.
Yes.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to table 8039 and 8040.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Councilman--
Wait, hold on.
Read it. Read what the--
They're one at a time. What do you mean? There's separate mo-- there's separate ordinances there, Joe.
Yeah.
If you want to vote on them separate-- Well, I'm just saying. So, fine.
You're making a motion to table both?
Yes. Yeah, you tried-- Well, I'm still gonna make that motion.
You can do it one at a time, please.
We'll do them one at a time. I'm making a motion to table--
You had a second, so roll call, please.
Hold on.
What are we making--
What are we tabling?
What's the motion?
My colleagues had requested that we do it one at a time, so the motion is, one at a time, uh, ordinance 8039. Motion to table.
Please read ordinance 8039.
An ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 99 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Salaries and Compensation, more particularly Article Six, thereof entitled Confidential Officials and Employees, Revises Eligibility for Health Insurance Coverage and Retiree Benefits.
Have a motion to say-- Roll call, please.
Wait, who's second to table?
Rosemary.
Councilwoman Pino. Okay, councilman Damato.
No to table.
Councilman Gibson. Yes to table.
Yes.
Councilman Koloje.
Yes to table.
Councilman Latona.
No.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
No to table.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes to table.
Four yes, three no. Ordinance is tabled.
Can you read ordinance 8040? That's how we usually do it.
Ordinance, an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter 99 of the Code of the City of Clifton entitled Salaries and Compensation, more particularly Article 1, thereof entitled Municipal Council, Eliminates Eligibility for Health Insurance--
Move it on first.
Motion to table.
Sa--
Second.
Wait, second to table, Chris, or second--
Well, I was seconding your motion, Mary.
Okay, so then that was first.
Okay.
So, Chris seconded--
A motion to table.
So, Chris seconded. No, you have to vote on my motion first.
No.
Motion to approve--
A motion to table takes precedence.
So, Robert's rules says motion to table gets--
Who's second to table?
Councilwoman Pino.
So, have a roll call.
This is motion to table 8040. Councilman Damato.
No to table.
Councilman Gibson.
No.
Councilman Koloje.
Yes to table. Thank you for the courtesy.
Councilman Latona.
No.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes to table.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Absolutely not.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes to table.
Motion to approve--
Three yes, four no. Motion failed.
A motion to--
Mayor, I'd like to make an amending motion--
To approve 8040.
Second.
And Chris already seconded.
Yes. And so now, based on Robert's rules of order, I have the ability to make a motion to amend this, and I would like to make an emotion to amend this so that it is grandfathered and takes effect as of January 1st, 2027.
Pino. Councilman Damato.
No to the--
Let me understand. So, the two council people that made the motion, both are the ones--
We're in the middle of a roll call, please.
Wait, let me ask my question. I'm sorry, everyone else had a time. That they were the ones who are taking health care benefits. And I might add illegally because it's family benefits, and our ordinance clearly says council and spouse. I get this. So, now they wanted to continue through their term. Okay.
Well, we have a roll call, please.
For the record, I do not take those health benefits.
For the record, you just changed because you don't have Chapter 78 in Mount Olive Township.
Correct.
So, you pay nothing.
Correct.
Motion to amend--
So, I agree with--
We're in the middle of a roll--
Let's not mislead the public, councilwoman. Right? Because you're making this statement that--
Motion to amend 8040.
Doing a roll call.
No to the amendment.
No to the amendment. Councilman Gibson.
No.
Councilman Koloje.
Yes.
Councilman Latona.
No.
Councilwoman Pino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Absolutely not.
Mayor Grabowski.
Yes.
Three yes, four no. Motion failed.
Motion to approve on first reading, ordinance 4040-25.
Second.
Councilman Damato.
Yes.
Councilman Gibson.
Yes.
Councilman Koloje.
No.
Councilman Latona.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino.
No.
Councilwoman Sadra Kula.
Yes.
Mayor Grabowski. Four yes, three no. Okay, second reading will be--
It passes. Make sure you say it passes.
Pass first reading. Second reading will be October 7th. This concludes the ordinances for this evening.
Be published according with the law. Next portion is the floor to members of the public. Please come up, state your name and address. We have a five limit, five-minute limit.
And folks, if you don't mind, you're already doing it, but please just remember to line up along the wall if you wish to speak. We want to keep the center aisle clear.
And please, sign in ahead of time to keep the speakers moving, please. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
No problem. Glad to be of service. I did have a number of comments that I was gonna make this evening, but guess what? I'm really sorry. The hour is getting late. My message would be left on deaf ears. First of all, you guys, you-- I don't know how you do it, but you do it. And 2026 is coming up real fast. I am going to use my time as the president of the Clifton Democratic Club to do two things. First of all, to invite everyone to our campaign headquarters opening this Saturday at 567 Van Houghton Avenue. All are welcome. Come on out, meet the candidates, register to vote. We have an opportunity to register to vote at our campaign headquarters opening. The Democrats will also be at the Clifton Street Fair. We invite you not just to come out and meet our candidates, but come on down and register to vote. And also, if you are of voting age and if you see the opportunity to leave this city as a member of Clifton City Council, I strongly urge you in March to take your petitions out, get the signatures, and campaign, and hopefully win a seat on the council to help this community. I give you all credit for what you're doing, but sometimes, no matter what you do, it just doesn't work. I know you've got a long evening ahead of you. My thanks to each and every one of you. Good night.
Good evening, Gary Perino, Clifton. Whoever ran the candlelight vigil on Sunday night did a wonderful, wonderful job. It was very, very heartwarming, and there was a very good turnout. But the best part of the entire evening was councilman Bill Gibson was there, and I got to shake his hand and see him, and he's looking good. But that was the best part of the evening. It is a pleasure to watch our city manager and our legal staff. It's such refreshing to see you folks working as opposed to the last regime that nothing got to be done. I just wanted to say, good job, and please, keep it, keep it up. Councilman Damato, you had mentioned, I believe at the last meeting, that you were working with the city manager on a proposal for the BART dog park, if I remember correctly. I'd like to get together with you. I do have a few suggestions, and you can take them with a grain of salt, or maybe we can use it, but I think I have a good idea about that. If you would reach out to me, I would be more than happy to lend my support, and if you need volunteers, I would like to help. Talking about dogs and animal abuse, what a travesty I just saw with you folks here. It should be-- Mayor, with all due respect, we should have our-- I'd rather look at you directly than through the zero. We should have our freeloaders, or whatever they call them now, representatives here, and we should get their rear ends in here and show them, ah, maybe I don't understand this correctly, but doesn't the county work for us? We don't work for the county. And this animal abuse is going on in Clifton, and it needs to be stopped as an animal lover. We need to get these people in here, and if the prosecutor is not going to prosecute, let's get it back to home rule and let us run this thing. But it was a travesty, just listening to what the prosecutor, yeah, we're not gonna do it, and it's-- And if they won't get it, come in here, let's bring our representatives in here, whether it's from the assembly or the freeloaders, and get them here, and let's get this thing That's it.
Gerard scores yellow, Persian Road, Mayor Grabowski, council. Thank you for having me. What if a small change in planning can dramatically improve the quality of life and the cost of living in our city? Imagine not having to worry about budget deficits and eliminating essential services or having budget crises every year. Wouldn't our residents be happy? If you can dramatically increase revenue without burdening taxpayer year after year after year, we'll constantly talk about taking away some of our services. Over the years, I've observed many large-scale businesses, both retail and developers, knocking on the door to enter Clifton. I've also observed this council, in particular, pontificating that the flood of money is somehow bad, evil, or it's the enemy. So, how does this council deal with the perceived enemy? It ensures that the flood of money goes away, and instead, it passes on additional costs to residents with new ordinances that will generate fees to the city's dwindling coffers. This council is about to pass, or I assume it has just passed, an ordinance that's going to make it more restrictive and prohibitive to make my hometown homeowners more wealthy. By penalizing my neighbor with additional fees to expand their home, it impacts the entire neighborhood. When your neighborhood, when your neighbor spends $300,000 to put an addition on his home, the value of your home goes up. When a neighbor spends a million dollars to do a massive expansion, the value of his real estate goes up, but also his neighbors as well. These ordinances are trying to take that away, and in essence, what you are doing is preventing your constituents' property values from increasing because you want to punish someone who's investing in his home. They shouldn't be punished. They should be rewarded for wanting to reinvest in their properties and make this town better. But there's a solution, and it's, I'd like to make a challenge to this group and to the city manager by explaining my thesis. A dramatic shift is occurring in our economy in the form of artificial intelligence. For anyone not paying attention, there will be literally trillions of dollars being spent in this country over the next two to three years, two to five years, trillions of dollars. All we need to do is have the smarts to capture a miniscule percentage of that money. Now, our city brings in approximately $5 million in tax revenue from new technology, specifically data centers. Most residents don't even realize that there are three data centers already in Clifton. They don't put kids in the school system. They don't use fire or police because they have high-secure buildings, and they don't bring in traffic, yet they are tremendous contributors to the tax base. I volunteered on the zoning board of adjustment for 16 years, and we saw a couple of these projects in front of us. For those that don't know what data centers are, they're facilities, very simply, that contain computer servers, networking equipment, it's the backbone of the internet. They store data, transmit data. Some can be small rooms with servers, some can be massive-sized warehouse buildings. The point is, the world of technology is moving very quickly, so the window won't be open indefinitely. The time to take action is now. My challenge to this council is to be proactive, something I have quite yet seen from this group. My challenge to you is to put together a short-term, a medium-term, a long-term plan to attract this type of business into my town. The challenge to you is to spend time and energy with the city manager, the CFO, Economic Development Committee, to attract this type of business. Not every environment can support these facilities. It needs to be large cities with close proximity to larger cities. Clifton checks all the boxes. These large mega-cap tech firms are looking in locations like Clifton, and their pockets are very deep. Instead of arguing about canceling next year's 4th of July fireworks, give BART its darn dog park, and we're bickering over a few dollars here and there, vehicle leases, how many copiers, staplers we can afford. Concentrate where the money is. Millions and millions of dollars in tax revenue is out there. When the tax revenue comes in, it's reoccurring revenue year after year. Let's stop wasting time on BS and energy, and let's bring resources into this city. It won't be easy. It will be work. It'll require the council to work together, and will involve addressing some zoning issues. Very bright guy over here, city manager DiMarzo, I'm certain he has some knowledge and experience on how to make this happen and how to attract such beneficial and lucrative industry. Time to roll up your sleeves, get to work. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council. Kim Castellano, 59 Maharath. I'm also the founder-director of Power of One. I'm here tonight for two things. One, I'm really excited. Our programs are back. Everyone's very happy at the Senior Center. We're also, next week, starts a new program. It's called Grief Share. It's like a grief share for people who are grieving the loss of a loved one. It's an eight-week, brand-new program. Hope Reformed Church is hosting it. It's free, so, and I'll be leading the eight weeks. The Senior Center, we haven't been there since, I guess, the end of May, right? Summer came when we pulled back our programs for our vulnerable population. I wanted to share something. I wasn't gonna say this, but I think this is the time. Just help me, just give me a minute to hold myself. The past month, we lost two people. Two. These two people, you probably all know who they are, but they were my clients, and I've been bridging the gap for them, one, all through COVID. In July, we pulled back because we had no way to get the food to the people, and then the volunteers were we meeting, and it was bad. So, that month, I pulled back the volunteers for the home support. That person passed away in August. In August, I got a referral for a person who was in crisis, and we went, and I used a whole month of August working with this client, and there's a gap in our system that's broken. It's not your fault. It's not, okay? But Power of One and the work that I do, and the Health Department does, we were in, and even St. Peters, we are working so close together. For me to even come here and tell you this, I'm emotionally a wreck. The person died because they didn't have their medicine. One of the things that we were doing was getting the person the medicine that they needed, so we were working with her, with Margaret, and we were trying to get the Medicaid. So, she was working with not having a medicine. She died on us. This woman died. Like, we're losing people because of services. I was left with all of this. An advocate with nobody. I'm working out of my house. I'm working out of my car. I need help. I asked for that barn. I'm being bold now. You know why? I lost two people. Two. I stopped going to that person because I pulled back my volunteers because we had no place to go. We gave up on them. They gave up on us. And they were found dead in their house. This is no joke. I need a resource center. I asked for that years ago. Nick was setting it up with the lawyers. I need a safe place for people like that that are not gonna go down. They don't live down in Botany. They're not gonna come to the city right here. These are people who, who worked all their life. They don't ask for help. I said, "Why didn't you call earlier?" Because we needed another month to get all the Medicaid and all that process, and the medicine, and the food. It was, it's been a hot mess. It's still a hot mess. My work is still not done because they're dead. I'm still an advocate in the gap with the family. I'm sharing this with you because I really need help. I'll raise the money. I just need a place where I can work out of properly, where people can come and get the help that they need. One of the things the organization does is it improves the quality of life for our Clifton people. I don't serve anybody else but Clifton. There's a mom whose daughter just went to college. And now, they're taking her income and as if this kid is gonna support the whole household. They took away her food stamps, so now she's in our school system. Doesn't know how to get a food pantry, doesn't know, understand all that. So, I'm working with St. Peters, working with Nate. We have to fight for that person to get their food stamps back so they can feed their family, not this college kid. This is the work that we do. They didn't even know where St. Peters was. They're not gonna come walk in here to City Hall and ask for that kind of help. We get those referrals. I need a safe place to work out of. I really do need help. I will find the money to fix that barn, but we need that. Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Whittle, President of Clifton Against Substance Abuse. I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday, we will have the In Their Shoes program here at City Hall from 11:00 to 2:00, uh, in conjunction with the Health Department, Family Support Organization of Passaic County, and Attitudes, uh, Attitudes in Reverse. Uh, just a quick number here. Over 300 pairs of shoes will be on display. That's the number of youths that have committed suicide. That's a staggering number. I want to thank, uh, City Manager DiMarzo for meeting with me last week. Uh, a year ago, when we started this process of bringing this program to Clifton, uh, I met with the group up in Wayne, and when they hosted, we told them that we were gonna, Clifton was gonna make it bigger and better. We did our final walkthrough today here at City Hall, and it is gonna be bigger and better, something Clifton should be very, very proud of. We're gonna have over 30, you know, groups here displaying their, uh, their materials and their resources. We'll have the shoes. We'll have, uh, therapy dogs. Um, we'll have, uh, you know, they're, they're gonna be showing a video in here of the Kevin Hines story. Kevin Hines was a kid that jumped off the Golden Gate Bridge and lived, and now is telling his story, uh, and it's a pretty powerful story. And we'll also have people here that, you know, if anybody, anybody is in crisis, we'll be able to assist them. But, uh, it doesn't happen without the support of this council, the city manager, the Law Department, and our Health Department. It's gonna be a pretty powerful day. It's 11:00 to 2:00 on, uh, on Saturday. And I, I just hope I can, I already, Tony already told me he wasn't gonna be able to make it, but I hope to, hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Bart Servo, Delaware, The Forgotten Land. Is there any way? I, I know I talked to the city manager and, and Chris, and I told him we can use a couple extra park benches down at Duney Park. And I'm willing to buy one and donate it in my mother's name if, if we can get a couple of them. I mean, I'll, I'll pay for one of them in a, in a memorial for my mother. Uh, I was just wondering how I would go about doing that. I went to the car show the other day, and about 20 people came up to me and recognized me from being up here. And you know what every one of them said? The same thing? How disappointed they are in you, the council, with the bickering and the arguing. And they asked me if there's anything I can do about it. I said, "I could do about it," but that was the main thing. Every one of them said pretty much the same thing about the bickering and the arguing and the, and the carrying on between yous. It really, it's ridiculous. It's, it reminds me of my, of my grandkids fighting over crayons at the table. So, think about it, will you? I mean, really. Okay. Uh, again, I'm gonna bring up the sidewalks that I keep complaining about, that I've been complaining about for three years, and still, nothing is being done with them. I want to know why. Why, why isn't something being done with this ordinance? This sidewalk ordinance? I trip every time I walk up these sidewalks. Do I really have to fall down and break something just to get my point across? Because I will. I mean, I will. I'll, I'll fall down, and I'll have the ambulance come, and, and we'll make a big thing out of it, if that's what it's gonna take. And there's been a couple emergency orders put in on that, too. And we're talking three years. Does anybody know what's going on with the Delaware Post Office? That's been closed for about three years? It's, uh, the asbestos, it's loaded with asbestos. And what's gonna be done with it? Because it's just sitting there. And it's, it's a hazard. It's definitely a hazard. Oh, you guys are talking about rumble strips and all of that on this street, and that street, and this street. Not once did I hear Delaware have. And I've been complaining about it for five years. I mean, there, too. Somebody's gonna get killed. Is that what it's gonna take? Remember I told you this? Remember I told you this? Because if somebody does get hurt or killed, I will go on the news, and I will let them know that you've all been told about this numerous times, and it's getting ridiculous. My taxes. I froze my taxes. I'm old enough to freeze my taxes, and I own my homes, so I could freeze my taxes. Here's what I don't get with this deal. I still gotta pay the increase, and then I get reimbursed the increase. Why are you even, why do I have to pay the increase? I mean, you're taking my money, you're taking his money, her money, this money. And you, what are you doing with this money if you're giving it back to us? It's, it's gotta be gaining interest. It's gotta be going in an account somewhere. So, you're using my money for nothing, to, for you to make money. And I really don't have to pay it because I froze my taxes three years ago, but yet, I still gotta pay this increase. I don't understand that at all. To me, you're ripping me off, and I don't like it. I mean, give me a little, little bit of the taste, give me some taste of the money here. You gotta be making interest on it. I get no kickback on it. So, who's, who's getting the money? The city? What happens to it? Well, where's it go? Does it go, what do you do? Put it in a strong box?
State.
Save, which gains interest? Which gains interest? And who gets the interest? The city? Or whoever the county's in? Either or. I'm paying money that I, I'm putting money out of my pocket that I really shouldn't have to. I gotta put out extra money that I really shouldn't have to. I can use that extra 500 or whatever it is. And it's, it's really ridiculous. I mean, you charge us for everything. Charges for a sewer, you charges, you charges for everything. And it's really ridiculous. I, I, there's so many towns that get things for free, and I can't understand the, the size of Clifton, why we don't get things for free. And you know what else towns have that we don't have? Dog parks. That's what they got. Every town around us has dog parks, except Clifton. Thank you.
How you doing tonight? My name is Richard Aceto. I live at 101 Howard Avenue. We've been having a problem for three and a half years with the woman on the corner feeding the pigeons. We get about 150 pigeons a day, and they sit on my roof, and they sit on my neighbor's roof, and they poop all over it. And I just had a $30,000 roof put on four years ago. And the pigeon poop rots the shingles on my roof. And they also have diseases, and they also have, it's not good to have pigeon shit on, on my, uh, car every day, and all my neighbors. It's in my driveway, on my lawn, and it also brings rats. My neighbor had rats. I had rats. I had to go out and buy rat-based stations. One morning, I came out, I found five dead rats in my yard. And then, I have dogs. If my dogs would've got it, they would've gotten infected. This is every day. So, the other day, I got fed up. I told her, "Stop feeding the birds." She went ballistic. We had to call the police, and they said, "This ain't the police matter. You have to go to the, um, the Health Department." I go to the Health Department, and they said, "She's allowed to feed the birds." And, and this is, I'm telling you, every day, I have to get up in the morning. All my neighbors over here, we have to clean our cars every day. We have to hose down our driveways, and it's disgusting. And last year, I just got a new kidney, November 4th. So, it'll be one year this November 4th. I can't be around stuff like this that has diseases, parasites. It's not good for my kidney. I could lose it because of these pigeons. I'm not gonna lose my kidney over these damn pigeons, excuse me. It's very, um, uh, unhealthy because the pigeons are pooping all over our lawns, and we have little kids, you know, they have grandkids that play on the lawn. It's very unhealthy, and it's not, uh, you know, good because it's, it's just bad. And then, my wife has pictures of, uh, every morning, she feeds them around 7:30 in the morning, and all these pigeons swoop down, and they eat it, and then they poop. So, some, I mean, and then, uh...
Something has to be done. Patricia Aceto, 101 Howard Ave. Mayor Grabowski and Council, good evening. Um, I have some handouts. I don't know if I can give them to you. I thought I would be speaking tonight as to change the ordinance in Clifton on the feeding of pigeons. I was instructed to do so with my husband. Apparently, Clifton does not know their own ordinance regarding pigeon feeding. The ordinance states, "In Clifton, New Jersey, it is illegal to feed pigeons on any property, including your own." My husband and I were told by the city of Clifton, "It is okay to feed pigeons on your own property."
Yeah, and it's a mess. Every morning, we wake up, we gotta hose down our properties. Would you guys want 150 pigeons on your roofs?
This is lined up. Lined up. And something has to be done. It's a problematic situation affecting not only us, but many of our other neighbors. It's a health hazard already, and something has to be done. Thank you.
And the state, and the state of New Jersey said you cannot feed pigeons. The state of New Jersey said you cannot feed pigeons. Would you guys wanna be, wake up every morning to hose down your car?
No one could park on our street without getting dropped?
Yeah, it's disgusting.
Their grandkids can't?
I'm telling you, it's disgusting. We can't deal with it anymore. This been going on for three to four years, and I'm tired of getting up early, cleaning my car, and everything else. I'm fed up with it. Something gotta be done. I mean, it, it, she read the word, there's all the birds. Exactly 7:30, she feeds the birds, you all swoop down? It, it's totally disgusting. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Christine Trela. I live at 88 Howard Avenue. The property that Rich is speaking about is side-by-side. I'm a corner property. There are 150 leased pigeons there. My grandchildren, I have four grandchildren under four, corner property, so I have a big front lawn. They thought it was fun to pick up feathers in the beginning. Well, I didn't realize until it started to accumulate that there are so many feathers. And of course, we don't let them do that. We don't even want them to go outside on the front lawn anymore. So, it is a health concern. They're little kids, and, um, I can't prevent so many birds on the property. So, I'd like some support. I don't know what can be done. If you can give us advice, because as Rich stated, it is a law, but how do we enforce it? How do we keep our property that we're proud of and spend time and money on to be safe and enjoy it? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Hi, Irene Puglio, 106 Howard Avenue. I don't wanna repeat everything that my neighbors have said, but, um, we've watched this now for, like they said, three years, and it is so out of control. It looks like a scene from the movie, The Birds. They line up, they know exactly when she's going to feed them. They line up, and they swoop down, and there's, there's about 300 birds. And it goes on in the morning, in the afternoon. We've watched her, I have a video of her coming out with, with large metal bowls, and she throws it on the lawn as if she's putting grass seed down. Um, it's become a health hazard. Like, um, my neighbor said, we have grandchildren. They play on our property in the summer. They're, they're in the pool, they're barefoot. It's becoming a health hazard, and it's disgusting. And we've tried to, to reason with her and ask her nicely, "Please, don't feed the birds." And she just continues to do this. She'll scream, she's out of control, and we have no other alternative but to come to the council and ask them to please help us because we, we have such a great neighborhood. We've all been there for 40 years. Um, myself, I've been there for 49 years. We take care of our property, and this is becoming a big problem. Thank you for your help.
Hi.
Before any of the pigeon people leave, I need an email. Can I get an email up for, up to the dais for me so I can contact you? It's the first time I'm hearing it. And I don't mean to take away from your time, to just, I just don't want them to leave before I get a contact.
Hi, my name is Tanner Rivera, um, up at the Ave. I have grown up in Clifton all my life. I'm, I consider myself a Cliftonite. I went to school eight, nine, Christopher Columbus, and then class of 2020. Um, I got my, um, degree from Montclair State University last year. I'm now pursuing my master's. Um, I'm here to talk today about, over the weekend, Clifton held a vigil and moved the flags half-staffed for, um, Charlie Kirk, who officially died to gun violence this past Wednesday. My issue is not the vigil and the flags at half-staff, but the issue is we did not do the same for Melissa Hortman, State Representative of Minnesota, and her husband, Mark Hortman, who were also shot and killed due to gun violence. Clifton is a city that cares, and moving the flag half-staff makes, makes it look like Clifton is one-sided and is insensitive. It leaves citizens of Clifton to question, do they care for everybody? Or do they only care about those who have the same beliefs or political affiliations? Clifton proudly, Clifton is proudly diverse, no matter your race, religion, belief, political affiliation. I ask, I ask you, council, to be more aware of the diverse and political atmosphere of our very diverse community when it comes to things like this. Because we are in times where, where, where it's, it matters to people, whether you, who you are, and it's very scary times. Thank you.
Good evening. Ahmed Abdalbaki, Richfield resident. The statement that I'm making is that of a private citizen, and I do not represent any organization. I come here tonight to speak about an event that was held here on Sunday. The event was marked as a vigil, but was more accurately described as a political rally of hate. And to make things clear, I do not condone his murder, and neither do I celebrate his life. There are many residents who express the same sentiment, but we allow hate to fester in the community, and after Sunday, we host and welcome it as well. The individuals who came that day celebrated a man who will say was murdered for his opinion and right to free speech. An opinion is not welcome in Clifton if it's hateful towards marginalized individuals, and it's not free when it comes at the expense of others. The purpose of platforms like he had and of the presidency are not to be divisive and polarize a nation. It'll bring people together on the commonalities rather than dividing the masses on their differences. Unfortunately, he did create a wedge between people while preying on college students by using biases with no or limited facts. His condescending manner was apparent because he listened to respond rather than listen to understand. He was there on college campuses to get under students' skin with his smug smirk and have his cult-like followers cheer for him, regardless of what he says, making them blind to his toxicity. What he said openly about the Black and other marginalized communities are unacceptable to those that live here in the greatest, in the great city of Clifton. That is a man who said the Civil Rights Act was a mistake. I'll repeat that again. This is a man who said the Civil Rights Act was a mistake, and we had the audacity to venerate him on this property. Think about the harm that's being, that's being brought to the city by honoring him here. I know some will say he's not racist. Then why is that the Black community is facing a backlash from his supporters' so-called hero's death? Believe me, this is not a man of honor. He left a morally bankrupt legacy in his view and treatment of people not like him. Jesus, peace be upon him, is a part of my faith, faith as it was his, and that said individual spoke and dealt with the people in a manner Jesus wouldn't approve. I request that more hateful gatherings do not occur on my city grounds. Thank you.
Good evening, Judy Basford. The, um, statements I'm about to make are made by, as my capacity as a private citizen, and not in my capacity as a board member for the Clifton Board of Education. These statements are also not representative of the Clifton Board of Education or its individual members. They solely represent my own personal views. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, and fellow community members. Um, before I say what I really wanted to say, I just also want to tell you that every month, I get eight cases of six gallons of Poland Spring water delivered to my house. I can't even give my dogs tap water because I can't tell you what happens if I do. I can't even give my dogs tap water, because I can't tell you what happens if I do. So I'm gonna ask you, you're, you're milling my streets on Thursday, and you're paving them? And then if this gets resolved, are you gonna rip them up again? Where's the organization that's supposed to happen? I've been waiting thirty years for clean water. I think I deserve more than an increase in my sewer bill and an increase in my water bill. I want a refund. I'm not kidding. If there's any young lawyers out there that would like to contact me to do a class action suit, please find me, because it's time. There's other people that would join in on me. I wanna take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to the council and our city manager for approving and supporting the recent Clifton Community nine eleven event. It was truly a beautiful and touching gathering, one that allowed our community to come together to honor, reflect, and respect the lives of nine Clifton residents that lost their lives on that tragic day. And we've added one firefighter who had lost his life to nine eleven illnesses. The event reminded us all of the strength, the resilience, and the compassion that exist within our community. Seeing family, friends, and neighbors gather in remembrance, sharing stories and memories, reinforced the importance of unity, empathy, and never forgetting those we lost. It was a moment to pause, to reflect on sacrifices made, and to recognize the enduring impact nine eleven has had on each of our lives. I also want to acknowledge the individuals who would turn each year, year after year, to ensure this remembrance continues. Your dedication ensures that the legacy of those we lost in our hearts and in our community. Thank you again to the council and to the city manager for making this possible. Your support allows us to honor our fellow citizens with respect, dignity, and that they deserve. It is through these moments that we grow stronger as a community bound by memory, compassion, and serve humanity. I also want to mention that I will be submitting my request soon for the two thousand and twenty-six event so that you can approve it. The sooner you approve it, the sooner we can start preparing, because two thousand and twenty-six, nine eleven is twenty-five years, so we wanna do something a little bit more on that event. Once again, thank you. Thank you to the community for this experience and for making it so meaningful. Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Matt Ward, one soul Ave. I'm sorry I was late for the public presentation on the budget, so I'm just gonna offer my comments now. The tag governing body is really about making decisions. I don't have to tell you this, but you folks waited a long, long time on the budget. And now I've heard promises about starting the budget process early. Try to keep in mind the credibility that was lost in trying to say that the first time. If you had done it the first time, we wouldn't have had the state send us a letter saying, where is the budget? My understanding of this is that two-thirds of the settlement of the budget comes from using the surplus. That's almost twenty tax points, folks. Ten million dollars. So for all of this back and forth that went on, the easy way out was, we'll just use the credit card, and we'll just pass it down. So for all of the cuts that were talked about, and I'm gonna tell you this, folks candidly, it's easy conceptually to talk about cutting the budget. Everybody's in favor of cutting the budget, until you have time to do it. And I credit the city manager. He came in, sort of like a relief pitcher, came in at the seventh inning of the ballgame, and he had to come up with something. So he came up with three and a half tax points. Unfortunately, on the flip side of that, and I think Councilman Sadra Cooley indicated that, we're not bonding. We're not gonna bond. So if we wanna talk about roads, and I've mentioned this to Bill, because Bill's on traffic safety with me and a few other people, go down to Getty Ave between Piaget and Clifton. Please, please go down there. And somebody needs to pick up a phone. It's not Passaic Valley Water, just to be clear. It's P S E N G that supposedly making these. Somebody needs to have a timeline when this road is gonna get done. Some time of timeline. And city manager, I'll be at Thursday's meeting. I wanna know what the streets are coming up that are in order. What's the priority? What are the streets? Okay? So we all know clearly what's gonna happen here. So let me just finish this. You finished a budget with a six point five tax point increase. Three point five came from expenditure cuts. You've used ten million of the fourteen million surplus, so that leaves four million. So do the math on this. If you raided the entire surplus next year, you still have to find six tax points right off the top of the bat, because you won't have the surplus next time. So where's that gonna come from? So when we talk about credibility in the process, that's what we're talking about. So let me mention one other thing, and, you know, I saw Joe make a presentation to the Clifton Democratic Club, which is spot on. The rating agencies don't go with all the smoke and mirrors. They look at the numbers. And when they see the numbers, they're gonna say, geez, they took it from the surplus. So they just kick the can down the road. Ask your administration and the financial officer how much of a difference that the credit rating for the city of Clifton will be impacted by the decision on using the surplus. Did the rating, so-called the interest rate, how much will that go up when we do bonding of a major sort? And it's in the several million dollars. It's a huge amount of money that goes out for bonding. Well, that money will be impacted by the interest rate that the rating agencies will then pass. That means the taxpayers have to pay for that. So I hear everybody say about putting the process earlier, and you should. What's the target goals? If you have a certain amount to be cut from administration, give them a target and ask them that. You wanna cut two million, three million, six million? How would you get there? Then have public comment, so people can say, well, we're thinking about cutting these people. Keep in mind this, cannabis was voted down, charter study was voted down, came late on the table on furloughs and layoffs. That couldn't be considered, because the money that you would realize from that couldn't be used for this particular budget cycle. Now, no one wants to lose a job, but there are people hurting right now because of what's gonna happen. Your credibility is gonna be judged on the budget process you follow, because that's gonna set in time the revaluation process that's coming on. You wanna talk about the big iceberg that's gonna be sitting out there. The revow is gonna have a huge impact on people. So I have to say this, folks, I would ask you this in final, having sat in the seats that you were in right now. Please start to talk to each other with a civil tone. Try to figure out a consensus. Come to the meeting with the hope of getting four votes, or five, maybe even unanimous, on what the process is for next year. I wish you well on this, but understand one thing, there are people watching this. This process that went on was just not productive. Thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you.
Henry Chelazinski, Clifton, New Jersey. Real quick, I got two things. Before you go and poo-poo the pigeon poop people, one of the people memorialized on that wall, Bill Holster. I believe he contracted a lung disease due to pigeon poop that he used to keep pigeons in his youth, and that's one of the things that led to his demise. You may wanna fact-check that, maybe ask Bob Sillick, since he's been in City Hall for about fifty years. But that's stuck in the back of my mind, that pigeon poop was one of the contributing factors to his demise. The other point I wanna bring up is, this is Clifton. We're located in New Jersey. This isn't a third world country. We are entitled to clean, potable drinking water every day, twenty-four seven. For Judy Basford to have to come up here and yell at the water commission, yell at the council, for thirty years this has been going on in her life, that she can't go to her faucet, open it up, and get a drink of water, you would think that she's in the deepest, darkest reaches of a third world country. But this is America. She's entitled to clean water. Do something about this. Make Passaic Valley Water Commission run brand-new water mains right up to her house and let them find another source of water. When you open up your faucet, you're entitled to clean water. You don't have to go out buying a million gallons of water every year from Deer Park or Poland Spring or something like that. That's why she pays taxes, that's why we have Passaic Valley Water Commission. Fix her problem. You're done with the budget, now start taking care of quality of life. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Seeing no one, I make a motion, oh wait, is there anyone on Zoom?
No, there's no one on Zoom.
Uh, make a motion to close public portion.
Second.
Okay. City manager, do you wish to reply to anyone that came up here?
Just a couple of topics, mayor. We are working on that dog park or that particular park. So there is, there'll be a presentation to the board relative to some thoughts and some configurations as to that land. I didn't know about a post office, I don't know, do we own a post office over there? Is that the US post office? Who owns that post office?
It's a US post office, but they leased the building from a private landlord. The building's been closed for several, several months. I used to go there almost every day. And it said that it's due to asbestos in the building, but there's no sign that they're cleaning it up.
But who owns the building? Is it, is it the feds?
A private individual.
Okay.
You can find it on the tax records. They lease it to the post office.
Gotcha. As far as the wildlife, city of Clifton does have a similar ordinance that we have at the shore. You can't feed the seagulls and that type of thing. It's called feeding of unconfined wildlife. So I'll take a look at the pictures again, and I will define if it's confined to their property or somebody else's property, but the city does have an ordinance relative to, to unconfined wildlife. I'll speak really quickly relative to the, to the vigil. For me, when I was contacted, it was, it was more problematic denying it than it was approving it. And so I'm a constitutionalist, and under the First Amendment, people have the right for free assembly. And so then I started conferencing it with legal, and legal kinda gave me the background relative to some of these other events that were used. BLM protest was, was given on-site. Palestinian protests were given on-site here. So I'll let the legal define it a little bit more, but for me, it was the right to assemble on government land relative to this particular event. Whether the flags were at half-staff for nine eleven, whether there was a presidential order to lower the staff, the, the flags, again, within the confines of that particular day. I had put out actually a stress informational piece to the staff even prior to this event. So, you know, there is, there is much tension in the nation, there is much tension in the community. But again, for me, it was more problematic denying that event than it was approving it. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, mayor. I just would like to add that the event on Sunday night was not a city sanctioned event. It's more of a First Amendment issue. Citizens have the right to peacefully assemble on public property, and they don't need the permission of a governing body to do so. Two times last year, I believe, as Gary mentioned, there were groups that came to City Hall regarding the Palestine Gaza Strip thing, incident that's going on daily. And a couple of years prior to that, after the tragic death of George Floyd, there was a Black Lives Matter event held here that was very similar. I mean, it was essentially the same setup as what I saw from pictures from Sunday night. So it's, it's a First Amendment issue. We can't prevent people from peacefully gathering on public property to express whatever views they choose to express, as long as they're doing so peacefully. In these other instances that I just referenced, the people that were organizing it gave us advance notice, which is always good, you know, to have proper police protection available for everybody's safety. So, you know, that we, we can't control or choose one group over another group and say, yes, we agree with what you're saying, you can go use the public property. It's their First Amendment rights as citizens to use the public property.
Let's hear Mr. DeMarzo. We're good?
That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
We're gonna, Bill, we'll start with you tonight.
Do you have any committee?
Do we have any committee reports, mayor? Anybody have any, anybody wanna, anybody have a committee report? You said, does anyone have a committee report that they wanna? I guess not, okay. Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Ray. Thanks, I appreciate it. I just wanna say thank you to Rosemary Trinkle Baron, John and Trish. They happened to send food to my house tonight, and it was really great. It was from Agamis Deli, and it was really good. So I just wanted to thank them. I, they already mentioned about the pigeons, which I was going to address. We already addressed the issue as far as the young lady who came up. And I would say to her that, quite frankly, you could have a vigil also. Like, it's not just certain people. If you wanna have a vigil, then you contact our city manager, and that's the way it should, should really go. And I'm glad that Tom had brought out that we had other ones in the past, because that was really important, and it was for the, for the city. I think that's really pretty much that I have tonight, mayor. And I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Councilman Sadra Cooley.
First, two things to the city manager. Can we start talking about the garbage contract? Since we missed the window, and now we're tied into the garbage contract for two thousand and twenty-six, so we need to start looking at that, as well as recycling. We need to, to look at everything. Also, I think Tony asked for it, I know I've asked for it. I'd like a zoning committee meeting. We need to update the zoning ordinances on houses of worship for parking. We know the current application in front of the planning board is grandfathered in, but these ordinances need to be updated. And we were promised back in February, we would have it in March. Well, what month are we in? It's ridiculous. We talked, budget, couldn't agree with you more. I say it every year, we need to set dates. And in fact, Tony took the lead with dates set for budget meetings. I think four of us responded. Three said the dates were okay. Joe Collojay said no. I think it was me, Tony, and Chris, I think, responded, and Bill. Nobody else responded. We need to start, and yes, we need to give direction. I keep saying it. We need to give the administration, and I've said this year after year, parameters. What will it look like with a two percent cut or raise? Flat, whatever. We need, we need to come up with those parameters. We can't start off with thirty tax points and then, oh, we're heroes, because we cut it down to, what is it now, six point five? And you're right. We used a lot of the surplus, but have no fear, because even though this is a bare-bones budget, and you can mark this date on your calendar, guaranteed, we'll have expenses overstated and revenues understated. Last year, we heard it was a bare-bones budget. The first budget transfer in November was taking five hundred thousand dollars, almost a tax point, out of the police salary lines. Flushing, house flushing, we talked about this. Judy, when you flush your house, they wanna come and flush your, all your pipes in your house? It goes into the sewer. Don't listen to the nonsense. It goes into the sewer. And it's ridiculous. You're right. That is a right that you should have clean water. It's sad. It's sad that you don't have it. Very sad. You heard my questions? We got no answers. Zero answers. But all they know how to do is raise and raise. And actually, when I look at this presentation, we're spending all this money for covering reservoirs, when 55% of our water comes from the Seig River. It's amazing. Bart, Dunney Park, I meant to say this last time, I've been on the forefront. I was the one complaining, putting on social media, complaining to the past administration about dumping snow leaves. It's a disgrace. I've said it for years. How, in a study of our parks, that wasn't top on the list, I have no idea. We talked about Delawanna. Flags were ordered to be at half-staff, and the only thing I'm going to say is, anyone is free. It was a private event hosted by two individuals, and yes, I did attend, and it was a beautiful ceremony. There was no hate. Actually, I've never seen such respect in a gathering in all the years I've been living in Clifton and going to it. In my book, murder isn't a political event. Murder is murder, and that's what it is. No one does, no. You're too young, but I remember being a young girl, getting, this teacher stood up, we had a moment of silence, and she started to cry. We had no idea what it was. President John F. Kennedy was assassinated. We were let out of school early. We came home, and for the next three days, four days, we didn't leave the house, and you had the TV on 100%. Whether you were for John F.K. or against him, and to this day, when that little boy saluted the coffin, that's what it's about. There's no place for murder in this country, and that's what it was. Let's see. Judy, budget, flushing. Mount Prospect. Gary, too bad you're not here. Do we have five minutes today or 10?
Five.
Well, we have no other things. I don't understand why we don't have our 10 minutes. Just let me finish Mount Prospect.
We are ready, because that's what we voted on.
No, we voted if we had to go back into executive session, and to do the meetings was five minutes, not 10.
We agreed to five minutes, and then if we had time...
You're done, five more. Okay.
Okay, whatever. I just, one thing. Mount Prospect, the corner of Mount Prospect and Van Houten Avenue today, school letting out.
Councilman Latona.
Starting off with some good news, I want to say thank you to our hero rookie police officer Maldonado and his father, who definitely saved some lives last week until the fire department arrived by knocking on those doors, and to the fire department for saving those two sidehouses with their quick response. Congratulations again to Marge and Bob on 50 years of service. I think I also seen the police chief's certificate, it was 30 years of service. Thank you to him. Saturday, we have the In Your Shoes, I'm sorry, I'll be away this weekend, from 11:00 to 2:00, and the also Mexican flag raising at 3:00 P.M. Again, I'm sorry, I'm going to miss that. And on Sunday, we have the street fair, the Ukrainian picnic, and the John Sammer Run, and the Praise baseball game at Albina at 3:00 P.M. Okay, let me go through. Next Tuesday, we have a special council meeting, the DOT, who is going to give us a presentation on Allwood Road, and a forensic auditor will also be giving his report from the forensic audit. 2026 budget, yes, we are going to bring some structure back. Everyone hears me say, I'm trying my best to let go of the past on what was done. So the budget meetings are set for the third Tuesday in January, February, and March. 13th of January, the 10th of February, and the 10th of March. And again, asking the administration to meet with the department heads in October, put a draft budget report together for November, give us something by the December 16th meeting for us to review. We are going to get ahead of it this year, so no one can say we're behind the eight ball, and hopefully we pass the budget for March. Permit parking, I didn't get a chance to get it out to my colleagues, but I went through on the permit parking with the residents, the three biggest issues. So the three things I'm going to send to my colleagues, have legislations planned if a majority of us agree on, and if any of them have any input, send it back to all of our council colleagues, administration, to work on it. Three biggest issues. From one year to two-year on permit parking, unless you get a new car or you move, submit your application online, so everything can be done online, you can pay online, submit your paperwork so it's ready to go. And number three, for the safety of our residents, instead of putting a street on it, we're going to go with a section of town. So it'll then bring the safety for our residents in putting our street on it. So if you're in Upper Montclair, Montclair Heights, Albina, Delawanna. So that's what's going to go out, and if all goes well, that resolution ordinance should be on for first reading next council meeting. We talked about updating the parade and festival ordinance for next meeting. From the administration, the swipe scanners need to be fixed for January next year. So whatever you all got to do to get that fixed, this governing body passed that last month. Same thing with a status updating the citywide overtime policy to go top to bottom. I hope the administration's working on that. Candyland. Mr. Siano, thank you very much. I asked last meeting, first sponsor, that should bring the cost down from $8 to $5 for Candyland. Mr. Siano offered to make a $2,500 donation to cover that cost. If we find two more sponsors to Candyland, we can make and bring that down to free to the residents. So if there's anyone out there wishing to become a sponsor for that, please contact one of us on this governing body or the administration, and that would be a great thing to bring that cost down. Quick on the questions. George brought up, oh, AI factories. Yes, that would be a great improvement with the AI. We have a lot of factories, especially in Delawanna, which bring that in. So if we can get that moving, I'm all on board with that. Bart, we brought up the doorbobs. The rumble strips, I agree. So if it takes a vote at this council, or to get something from traffic safety or the traffic department, Delawanna Ave would be a great addition to try to put the rumble strips on for the traffic and the speeding on that road. PSE and G delays with the roads. And I'm going to spend, real quick, prayers to Dre DeLuca, losing her father, 102-year-old WWII veteran, and prayers to the Rana family who lost their sixth brother in two and a half years. So to the Rana family, prayers out to you. And lastly, I'm sorry, I will answer online with the candlelight vigil, or if we get our five minutes, because we should finish early tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Colloje.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to add to the name of Melissa Hartman and her husband, Mark, and I'm going to also talk about Yaron Laschinsky and Sarah Milgram, who were just employees at the Israeli consulate, and they were gunned down also. And so I share the hurt that you feel. I do, because it is sad that we have a vigil against political violence, and then it's not inclusive for everyone who's experiencing political violence. And so I know what you're saying. We have some corrections that we heard. Earlier this evening, we were talking about the sewer bills for the school district. It was placed on the agenda as a late item, so I only had the opportunity to read through the eight pages now, but we did send them a bill, by the way. It was $736,0282 for 2025. So they did receive a bill. And as we learned this evening from Seig Valley Water's executive director, the city is working on the billing issue, not the BOE. So a little correction from what we might have misstated earlier this evening. Also, earlier this evening, there was a complaint about an article being one-sided, and it's difficult to have an article that includes both sides if one of the sides don't respond to the reporters. Now, I know in the past, it was the city manager's job to discuss or field requests from the press. If we're not doing that anymore, perhaps we want to consider a policy where we'll allow department heads to respond instead, because transparency demands government participation. We can't ignore a public asking questions and then act shocked, you know, that we think that it's a one-sided article. Also, for transparency, and I don't know why our agendas have now started to hide what our executive session is about, but it was a police chief contract, the police department network administrator, it was retiree health benefits, it was the S.A.A. contract, and it was insurance contracts. The insurance contracts have been tabled until our next meeting. Tonight, we adopted a budget, and we saved the taxpayers $4.33 a month. So to keep $52 in your pocket for the entire year, here's what you traded. $7.5 million worth of capital projects are no longer going to be done. So we can talk all we want about rumble strips and speed tables and sidewalks, we didn't fund it. Our ability to pay cash for new equipment so that we can become more efficient and start to save money, that was also cut. And so now, if we want to move forward with that, we're going to have to borrow the money, and the taxpayers are going to have to pay interest to try and become more efficient. There is no money in this budget for snow plowing or salting. If this year is anything like last year, we will manage to drain our storm recovery trust from what was once a high of $659,000 down to $125,000. That's enough to do one storm. This budget will also likely drain fund balance. I know my colleague feels differently, but we'll find out soon enough in December when we see an annual financial statement. But either way, it will certainly be below the 4% of our operating budget that fiscally sound towns maintain. So just to put this into perspective for you, we spent $150,000 for budgetary recommendations, and I'm a little disappointed that we're still going to have this meeting on a Tuesday when I said I needed to work and can't come, but I suppose it's easiest to have a forensic audit when perhaps people aren't watching, because that forensic audit was very damning of this council and our fiscal stewardship. But here's what you got coming for you next year. $459,000 automatic tax increase based on kicking the can down the road with this budget. You got a PBA contract that's going to cost us $2.5 billion more next year. We have an FMBA contract that's going to cost us $2 million more next year. We have a sanitation contract, as Councilwoman Saajakula pointed out, that's going to cost us another $0.5 billion next year. And if we want to catch up on our infrastructure needs, we're going to have another $350,000 increase. This council loves to talk about being fiscally responsible. This council loves to talk about being able to meet people's needs, meet infrastructure's needs, but then when it comes time to actually take an action, we do the opposite. And so I'm going to continue to remind the public, pay more attention to what we do than what we say, because actions don't lie.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Pino.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So first, I'd like to start off today by saying again, congratulations to Marge on her 50 years of service. That's amazing. Also, I want to highlight Mr. John Romanco on his retirement as also a school traffic guard. I know Mr. Romanco personally, and he's amazing, so thank you for serving. Also, I'd like to remind everyone that we are just a few weeks away from Clifton Behind the Scenes. It's coming back, and this time better than ever. We are presenting it in three different languages. So just for some of us that may not have heard of Clifton Behind the Scenes, is the initiative from my office, the office of Councilwoman Pino, with support of administration and some of my colleagues here, and of course partnering up with some of our nonprofits as well to get out there into the community. We want the community to know what is happening here in Clifton Behind the Scenes, know all the services that you have and all the opportunities you have to serve. So please, please join us. The English session, the sessions are an hour and a half. English isn't at 4:00, Arabic at 5:30, and Spanish at 7:00. So I look forward to seeing you guys. Our first session is this month, September 30. Also, I want to thank the speakers who came out. I want to speak to Ms. Rivera. I hear you, I see you, and I just want you to know that I acknowledge how brave you are, because I know what it takes to come up here and say what you did. So thank you for that. And with that, I want to officially welcome and say happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Here we are. As you all know, it started yesterday, October 15th, and it's going to go right through October 15th. So with that, I love to highlight, let me just grab it because I don't want to mess it up, we're going to kick off Hispanic Heritage Month here with the Clifton Art Center. So starting tomorrow, the Clifton Art Center has collaborated with Latino Leaders of Clifton and the Peruvian consulate to bring you the amazing, the Great Inca Road, which is an art exhibit that's going to be going through again tomorrow, September 27th, I mean, I'm sorry, September 17th, I'm so excited, through October 25th. But there will be a meet and greet this Saturday from 1 to 4, and we will be there, so we look forward to seeing many of you there. It's going to be amazing. There's going to be dancing and some appetizers and all this amazing stuff. So thank you again to the Clifton Art Center for their support. And again, just a friendly reminder, what's next week? We're back, the Third Annual Hispanic Heritage Month Latino Leaders Carnival. Super exciting. Remember, guys, it's five days this year, starting Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so please come out and celebrate. The culture, yes, is for Hispanic Heritage Month, but of course, we see everyone there, and we're excited to celebrate. And with that, last thing I just want to mention is, you can also find us and see us this Sunday at the ABA Street Fair. Amazing tradition here in the city of Clifton, and we are excited to be there. And when I say "we," the Echo Youth Program will be there. As many of you know, our Echo Youth Program is a all-year-round youth program that gives our youth many different opportunities. One of them is work experience. So the youth program actually purposely and looks forward to attending the street fair because that's where our youth get their hands-on work experience, and then they go work at the carnival. So it's super exciting, and we thank everyone for the collaboration. So please make sure you find our youth, they're going to be there. Echo eats, they're going to be serving and learning food service, and they'll also be doing face painting, customer service, all this amazing stuff. So please make sure you check us out. We will be there, and yeah, I, am I the last one? Well, before the mayor, so I wanted, oh, wait, Chris, did you go? No, okay, so I won't leave on a positive note, but on that, thank you. Thank you, everyone, and see you next time.
Thank you. Councilman DeMarzo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proud of the fact that when I speak during my privilege, I really make an effort to address a lot of the Clifton-specific issues. I can never really even get through the list of the people who come up, and I try to expand on that, but I'm going to do something a little bit different tonight. I want to talk about violence, and I think that it's incumbent upon leaders right now to step up and let people know that they're going to be okay as long as we all take charge of the situation and comfort each other. So there are times when this job gets very difficult, and when I find myself lost in it, I think back to the words of my theater teacher, who was a tremendous influence on my life, and he always told me, Chris, when you find yourself lost, remember the words of the great playwrights. They have a lot of wonderful things to teach us. And one of my favorite quotes that is a part of my life philosophy, it's a wonderful, wonderful playwright, Thornton Wilder, in the play Our Town, is the quote, "Way down deep, there's something eternal about every human being." And I was looking around, and of course, the murder of Charlie Kirk was disturbing, especially if you saw it. How could you not be disturbed by that on a visceral level? But looking at the division in the aftermath was far more upsetting to me. Why is political violence more impactful for us than all of the other violence that's happening? That's a question a friend of mine asked, a resident in town that I talked to, and my wife was also upset about everything that was going on and the way people were fighting online about it, and she said, you know, God, things are so dark, how do we get past this? Those are two wonderful questions, and it really got me thinking. Why political violence? Why is that so impactful for people? You know, and I think about my experience as an elected official. I'm not a politician, I'm not in a political party, I'm a normal guy. I'm a normal guy who hustled and hit the pavement and got up here through a wild conflagration of circumstances. And, you know, this is like a once-in-a-lifetime thing for me, man. Guys like me don't get a chance to have a say. I'm one of seven people out of 90,000 that make real decisions about our city and its future. And most people, they live their lives making a million beautiful little decisions. What's for dinner tonight? Which way am I going to take to work? Should I do my laundry Sunday, or can I knock it out of the way now? And that's great. That's the stuff life is made of. But I think the reason people feel so intensely for leaders, and I'm not just talking about political leaders, but leaders in a movement, influencers, is because they see them representing things about them that they'll never have the power to address, or never have the audience, or the influence that these people have. And so I think when people see apathy, or even worse, callous celebration when somebody that they feel represents them is killed, it's less about that person and more, I think people find themselves thinking, if they're that jubilant over that, would they be that happy if I died? If somebody killed me? And then you buckle down, and you get defensive, and the divide keeps going. And then think about how that spirals out when you experience personal violence that connects to you directly. The innocent Palestinians killed in Gaza, the Israeli hostages, children who are slaughtered in their classrooms, just attending their school. I want to give Clifton some homework this week, since all of this was inspired by my theater teacher's quote. First of all, go see some art. Art is the opposite of violence. It's creation for creation's sake. Go to a museum. Check out the exhibit at the Clifton Art Center. Catch a play. Buy a ticket to a play. See a movie. Just please, go experience some art. It connects you to your fellow human beings. And also, what I want you to do is to tell somebody in your life who is completely opposite of you politically, we all have somebody, that your dad who wore the MAGA hat to out to dinner, or the liberal niece who ruined Thanksgiving ranting against capitalism. I want you to go up to them, and I want you to look them in the eye and say, I love you, and this world would be a much, much worse place if you were not in it. And then I think some real conversation can happen. "Clifton, I love you all," to quote the Elton John song. "I hope you don't mind that I put down in words how wonderful life is because you're in the world." And please be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the 50-year service of Marge Bissell and Bob Solak. 50 years is a long time to serve the city. Marge is a wonderful lady. She's been a great school-crossing person, always cared about everyone. In fact, generations of people probably has their kids being crossed by Marge. It's when they were crossed by them when they were kids. You know, it happens. 50 years is a long time. So we'd like to thank that. I don't really want to comment too much about the violence. I just think that murder on any scale, anywhere, every human's life is worth something. Everybody is special. No one is better than anyone else. We're just different. We can't condone, you know, murder or anything like this for anyone, whether it's so popular or not popular. Like Chris said, if it was me or him, would people pour out? But I understand, you know, people are concerned because certain people have views, and they're entitled to represent if they want to represent. And like the manager said, if anybody wants to have a vigil, you know, public property, you're allowed to do that. So we don't tell people their views. They're allowed to have their views. I'm just saying that people, everyone's life, it matters. Everyone. Even if you're not known, death is a very serious thing, and murder is even more serious. So we have to take that into consideration, that we hope the country's not going in the wrong direction where every time you disagree with someone or something, people lash out, and this is what happens. We don't want this to continue. So let's just hope that, you know, people calm down with this. And I don't want to continue because I know it's a late night, but I hope to see everybody at the ABA Street Fair this weekend on Sunday. Come out and enjoy yourself. Can we go to resolutions?
We only have a few. We only have a few, right?
Yeah, okay, we have a few.
I can give you the list of the ones. Do you want to do them individually?
No, I think we could do them together, because I only think there's, let's, you give me the list.
456, 25 is the claims list. 462-25 is the walking paths.
Right.
And then there's just 471, 472, 473 are the retirements. And 474 is the Clifton Public Housing, where we had that public hearing last week.
I match. Let's move the group.
Second.
Roque.
Councilman Diamato.
Yes, to group.
Councilman Gibson is absent. Councilman Colloje?
Yes.
Councilman Latona?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pino? Absent. Councilwoman Sadjakula?
Yes.
Mayor Gabowski?
Yes.
Five yes, zero no, two absent. Group passed.
Second.
Objections?
Licenses don't have to have it.
Meeting adjourned.